I'd like to call to order the West Jordan City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 31st, 2024. I'd like to recognize that all of our council members but one are in attendance. Councilmember Zach Jacob will be not be with us tonight and I'm sure he's listening online and missing us a lot. All right. Well, we will begin our meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Rob Bennett has graciously accepted to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Rob.
With the audience, please rise. Please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind.
Thank you and please be seated.
Thank you. We have a great crowd with us tonight, so thank you for all those who are in attendance. We will now move to our public comment portion of our city council. During public comment, we invite anybody here in the audience and anybody online to use their time. They have three minutes to come up and give your public comment. During that time, the council will not respond to the comments, but if you do have something where you'd like us to respond or some information, we'll have you give us your name and contact information to Alan Anderson, who's our council director. I did not get any names to start with, so whoever's in the audience first. Looks like we have Chris McConaughey, I think. Is that your name? Come on forward and you are up for your public comment.
Good evening, council. I'm Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. Please forgive me if I read my comments tonight. Normally, I frequently welcome to share my thoughts with the council. It's about appreciation for acts of staff that I've seen, people going above and beyond. There's one gentleman who has done so repeatedly over the years that I wanted to make special mention of today. Mr. Kyle Byrd. Kyle was one of my favorite people, always so kind and thoughtful, working to make life better for his neighbors. I ran into him semi-regularly on the Jordan River Trail. As you know, that's nearly my second home. I've logged over 600 miles running up and down the trail the last three years. I'd see him, my morning run, either in his UTV and inspecting the trail, planning to fix an aging footbridge, spraying for weeds, or taking care of any of the other maintenance issues out there. Every once in a while, I try to mess with him a little bit by suggesting the terrible idea of having the city install a feeding station for the cats that live along the trail. In all of my run-ins, he was always quick to take care of the people around him. I remember going to the ribbon cutting for the new bridge crossing the Jordan River Trail just south of 78th. My wife and I had parked at the track station. He saw us and instantly offered my wife, who had recently had a child, offered her a ride in the UTV so she didn't have to deal with the steep walk up and down the hill with little kiddos. He took her and our youngest boys, and it was a small gesture, but it's typical of what I saw him do regularly, tending to the things, to the small things that make life better for the people all around him and care for them. When my father passed away and was interred at the West Jordan Cemetery, it was him that was there ensuring my father's final resting place was properly prepared. It is a unique comfort that I felt as my father was buried, knowing somebody who cared so genuinely and affectionately as Mr. Byrd, that we very much appreciated that warm act of service for my family. There are no adequate words for me or my family to express our sorrow at his passing. The residents of our city have lost a great man who did so many things to make life that much more enjoyable. I very much appreciate all the council has done and staff for Mr. Byrd to make sure he could have the resources to care for us as he has. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We share our love and our sadness as well for Kyle and for his family, and it was a big loss for our city this week. Whoever's next, come on up and just state your name and where you're from.
Revolution. I'm here to support the proposal of an installation of an America 250 Patriots plaque at the West Jordan Veterans Memorial Park. This plaque commemorates the milestone of the 250th anniversary of the birth of the United States of America and the Patriots who through their contributions to the cause achieved American independence with principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity. In addition, the America 250 Patriots plaque commemorates 250 years of growth, prosperity, hardships, and triumphs for all of the United States of America. The placement of the Commemorative America 250 Patriots plaque will serve to enlighten and educate Utah citizens, both young and old, while installing public pride in the rich history of Utah and the United States of America. We believe that it will be complement the other monuments already installed in the park. An important objective of DAR and the Utah State Society is recognizing, honoring, and thanking veterans and all active duty troops from every branch of service, from the Revolutionary War to today. It is our goal to place this plaque in a veterans' park where these men and women will be recognized for their service and their sacrifice. The America 250 Patriots plaque is in the possession of the Utah State Society and is being held by Child Enterprises in Springville, Utah, fully paid for. We would like to thank the council for its consideration of this proposal, and it is our hope that the installation will be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to discussing that here in our public hearings tonight. Is there anybody else here tonight that would like to speak? Come forward.
Yeah, surprise, surprise, I'm here. I'm Anne Marie Barrett, the manager of the Bingham Creek Library, and just here to talk about a few things that have happened at the library recently and let you know about some cool things that we've got going on. So, today is actually the last day for signing up for summer reading, so we're open until nine o'clock. If we end a little bit early here, everybody could run over and sign up if you haven't already. We also had a wonderful solar party earlier this month that was incredibly well attended. We had nearly 150 people show up to view the sun through special, oh gosh, special filtered telescopes. Apologies for my loss of composure there for a moment there, which was super wonderful. We were so happy to see so many West Jordan residents come and join us. They actually said that it was the best attended solar party they've had all year. Usually, they only have about 30 people show up, so it was really cool. I also wanted to share just a couple of cool things that we have at the library that are available for checkout that people may not be aware of. One of them is our tablets, our Launchpad tablets. These have games that are educational for children that they can check out for a week and play with. It has no ability to connect with the internet, but they have different themes. Some are math-related, some are reading-related. They are also appropriate for different age groups, anywhere from three up to about 10 years old. It's really a very cool resource that are available. And then to focus a little bit more toward the adult end of things, if you happen to have old photos or negatives or Super 8 film by any chance or VHS, we have a wonderful program that's known as Preserve the Memories where you can check out special digitizing equipment for different formats that you can make it so that you, things that you can't view maybe anymore, can now be viewed and saved in a digital format. It's really wonderful. So many different options available there. So, we hope to see people coming out for that and also want to say a big thank you in advance to the West Jordan City Police Department, who is helping us out with a very awesome program we're going to be having on August 5th at 7:00 at night. They are going to have their Canines come out and do a demonstration at the Bingham Creek Library, and we are very excited about it. So, hope to see you there. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. You got that within five seconds of the three minutes, so you know your timing. And we're grateful for the Bingham Creek Library and the Veridian here in our city. Do you have two great libraries? Real quick, if you're here to talk about the donation, we're going to have a public hearing if you want to wait till then to do a public comment. We usually only have public comments. You can only public comment once. So, you can come up now, but then you can't come up for the public hearing. So, it's your choice. The Daughters of the Utah Pioneers are... Great. Oh, Daughters of American Revolution, sorry. I said Utah Pioneers.
I am a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, which I am here for, but...
You're going to speak on a different subject.
I get to speak on a different subject.
Okay.
I provided Warren Hallmark with some information from Harriman City. We'd love to see partnership between West Jordan and Harriman City for the first annual Patriot Fest that is happening on September 7th from 1:00 to 6:30 PM. We're inviting small businesses and large businesses, medium businesses, food trucks. There will be performances happening in the afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00, and then we have a free concert that's happening. Nathan Osmond and the Coral Arts Society of Utah will be performing that evening as a free concert. So, we would love to have West Jordan City and the surrounding cities collaborate with us and be a part of that event as part of the Friends of Harriman, which is the nonprofit organization that was established about two years ago with a MOU that's in partnership with Harriman City. So, we'd love to have West Jordan involved. And the information is with Warren. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make sure Warren gets that to us. All right. Anybody else here tonight that would like to do public comments? Oh, all right. Come on up and state your name and where you're from, and you'll have three minutes.
I can mention that I'm representing my subdivision. I could speak for five. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm sure that would work. Yeah.
Okay. I'm hoping not to, though.
Okay.
Hello, I am Diane Sharp-Roberg. I live at 8409 South Meadowlark Lane in West Jordan. I've lived at that location since the fall of 1985, and my subdivision was brand new. I have already spoke with the mayor and Nestor, is it Gallo, on the problems we're having currently. We lived as a dead-end street for many, many years. We knew that there would be a subdivision coming in someday, which was what we called the Farmer's Field to our north. So, Meadowlark Lane is right off of Old Bingham Highway, just after you cross over the Bangator Highway. So, we live with Bangator Highway in our backyard, and that's been joyful. Anyway, but this has been a particular problem is because now Meadowlark Lane is a thoroughfare, fast-paced road for people to leave the new subdivision. We have 20 homes on a straight stretch of road, not just five homes, not just six homes, and not just, I believe it was, 13 homes on Maple Leaf Way, which they have the speed bumps to intersect that same subdivision. And I'm not sure exactly when those took place and those were put in, but they don't have anywhere near the long stretch of long, straight road as we do. We did have initially, so I also, I just want to back up a little bit. I run two small businesses that I'm very proud of, and West Jordan has been very wonderful and welcoming to my businesses. I run Dance by D, Creative Dance for Children, since 1990, and Dazzled Dogs since 1998. In various capacities, I volunteered for the city with my children dancing and my dogs performing. And I just feel like I would like a little help where I feel I'm shut down now and have been told we will give you some speed tables or what are those called? Speed radar signs? And we were grateful for those. However, they are no longer working, and I don't want to be gaslit on all of this anymore because I am out there, I live there, I watch the traffic, and these guys are speeding. I watched them hit that radar sign, and it flashes and can't even register because they're going so fast. Sometimes when they're past it, it's like registers about 35. Well, that's just too fast. We're a subdivision. We have small children. My dancers cross the road. My dance moms speak to me all the time about how crazy it is just stepping out of the car to take their little children into my dance room. So, I have grandchildren that live there and many other children. Someone's dog was hit by a car and killed recently from that north, from the new subdivision, and a little boy, his pet cat was also hit. Cat should be kept indoors, so I understand that one. And dogs get loose sometimes. I own three of dogs that I, they're my family members and I perform with. I'm very, very careful not to let them out, to get out there. Just anything can happen to children or pets. Again, I have approached the mayor. He did come kindly to my driveway. We had a meeting then. We also had another meeting that didn't go as well, but I am still upset by it, and I will stand by it. My neighbors also stand by it. I started this process in 2018 when Garbet Homes came and asked to apply to get approval from the city for the subdivision. I came up as the neighbor concerned, and I said, "I am not here to stop a subdivision. I can't do that. That's just progress. However, I would just like to see some speed bumps down Meadowlark Lane. That's all I ask." And honestly, I thought that wasn't a big deal and that would happen. And as time went on, I realized they're not going to do that. So, I don't know why I even spoke on behalf of my subdivision. I did the signatures. I've done that whole application I was asked to, and the mayor said to me, "You don't do speed bumps anymore?" Well, there is a speed bump and new subdivision going in right over the overpass on Mountain View that lands into a brand-new subdivision, all with speed bumps. I'm not okay with this. When you intersect a neighborhood from old neighborhoods that have a new neighborhood in the middle, you do right by both of them coming in. I just really would like to express that that's important to me, and it's not just me. My whole neighborhood is upset, and we would really like better attention. And whatever it takes, I'm willing to go the whole route, whatever you need me to do. I will do. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and the city has been a really wonderful place to live, and I'd really like it to continue to be that for me. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would give your contact information to Mr. Anderson over here before you leave, he can get you in contact with your local council member, and that council member can contact you. So, thank you. All right. Do we have any others in the room that would like to speak tonight? Okay, Alan, do we have any people online? Okay, nobody online, so I will close the public comments for tonight, and we will move to our next section with reports to council. We will start by council reports, and I'm not going to go in order, just whoever wants to go first. Looks like sister. Councilmember Whitelock, I don't know why that came out that way, but Councilmember Whitelock.
I can be your sister. I just wanted to report on a new health clinic. It's called Blossom Health, and it's direct care, which is a different type of medical clinic because they don't take insurance. So, they're doing it a really interesting way. They're doing it just like Netflix or the gym. You pay a yearly fee, and then you pay a small fee when you go in, and the idea is that the doctor can have more time with you. So, the doctor's name is Mary Tipton. She's been in business for many years. She was part of the Copper, Copper, oh dear, I don't remember, Copper Medical. I think there's something Copperview? No, it's not Copperview. Copper something Medical on 9800. Anyway, so she decided to jump out there and try something new. So, I'm excited to have them in our neighborhood. They're actually by Jordan Valley, and it was great to go see all of the people that were there for her ribbon cutting. It was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else tonight? If not, I will make a quick comment. When I ran last year for District 1, one of the things that I ran on was infrastructure. In my neighborhood, there's a newer portion and there's an older portion that has old pipes, old water pipes, old sewer pipes, you name it. And last year, the same pipe broke three times in three different places. I want to thank first the mayor and city staff for getting on top of that so quickly and fixing those pipes and fixing the road. We drove down the road about a month ago when it first got done, and my son, who's 16 and just barely started driving, the first thing he said is, "Dad, this road is so smooth." So, my hope is that in the future, my road, which is not smooth anymore, will be replaced as well, but that's down the path. But I bring that up because one street over, from the street that had the problem before, has had two water main breaks in the past week. And so, it just goes to show that there are portions of our city that need that infrastructure fixed, mainly in Districts 1 and 2 where a lot of the older homes are, but even in our other districts, you know, pipes break, sewer lines break. We have a great staff, and I wanted to just really say thank you to our staff for how quick they are when there's a break, that they get out there, they turn the water off, they fix the pipe, and they turn the water back on. So, people aren't waiting 24 hours to get water in their homes. So, thank you. Looks like we have Councilmember Green?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to jump in. I'm just going to relate something to the council mayor. I think I sent you an email, you and Corbin, earlier. There was a Facebook post today. Apparently, we had a pretty good-sized water break at 90th and 15th West over by Home Depot, but the neighbor, the West Jordan resident posted how much he appreciated the utility people out there trying to fix that water break, and then also mentioned about the same time, there was some things going on at a local gym that were a hazmat thing that involved both the fire department and the police department. And it's good that the resident posted that. I think it's great that we, but we should make sure that, I just wanted to make sure that, again, they got publicly recognized for the efforts today over at 90th and 15th, and that the other business trying to take care of the hazmat things because those are what makes West Jordan good.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. All right. Seeing nobody else, I will now turn the time over to Councilmember, he was a council member one time. Mr. Anderson, council staff report. Go ahead.
Thank you. That was many years ago. Counsel, thank you for a little bit of time. The only report we have today is our first youth council meeting for the new youth council will be on August 12th. We're planning their oath of office for August 27th. For the folks that are here today and the residents that are listening online, there will be a City Hall open house for the remodel. That'll be this Friday from 4:00 to 6:00. There will be, and Mayor, I'm probably taking over a little bit from you, but they can come here to the council office and the council suite and the chamber, and we'll show them around and all the gear that we have here to help keep the council transparent. Just a reminder that the August meeting schedule will be different. There will be Truth and Taxation on Tuesday, August 13th. There will be no meeting on August 14th. That meeting has been canceled. The Truth and Taxation is for the city and for Fairway Estates. There'll be a work session on Wednesday, August 21st, and the next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, August 27th. Then, we'll go back to the normal Wednesday routine for September, October. The ribbon cutting coming up. Speaking of ribbon cuttings, I think it was Councilmember Whitelock talked about the ribbon cutting that many of you attended at the hospital for a practice there. There's another one on the 14th of August at Liveaway Suites. It's a new hotel. I know that is very important to the council. You have expressed interest in strong economic development within the city, and so it's appreciative that you're there. There is also an event at Interstate Brick on Friday, but I know there's some competing events that day, so I'll be talking to you, see who can go to one and who can go to Interstate Brick. So, I do appreciate the extra time that each of you place in attending these events throughout the city despite your work schedules, and it's not just, being a council member is not just two Wednesdays a month. So, I'm appreciative that many of you attend all these extra activities. It shows that you're very engaged within the community. And I think that's everything that I've got at this time. So, thank you again, Council Chair Lamb.
Thank you. Mayor, we will now turn some time over to you for your report.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here with you. Thanks for letting me join you. You already heard they mentioned about Kyle Byrd and his passing. His funeral will be this Friday. That's the competing event that Alan was talking about. And that's him right there. Okay, last Saturday on July 20th, I guess it was the Saturday before last then, sorry, Saturday before last, our police department hosted a Spanish-language Driver's License Resource Fair, and that was held at West Jordan High School. And as you can see, the attendance on there, that was spectacular. I don't think they were expecting that kind of attendance, but it was out. It was great. The picture on the left, that is over in their open area. There were some booths set up there, and there were people from the State Driver's License Division and other places of resources to help them. And the purpose of this was to help them know what to do and what process to go through so they can get themselves either a driving privilege card or a real driver's license, depending on what their background is. And with the great success of that, that makes our streets safer because we have people driving who know what the laws are and can follow those while they do so. So, thank you for our police department for putting that on for us. Some things coming up. If you want to have an opportunity to meet with the mayor, it's one of my favorite times because I get to meet with unknown public till I show up. That'll be on Thursday, August 1st from 4:00 to 6:00. And then this Saturday is our next city e-waste and shredding event. So, if you have any electronics you want to dispose of to get them recycled, or some papers you want shredded, we'd love to have you come and make a drop off at Public Works over on 40th West. Our food truck roundup has been going very well. It continues to happen every Tuesday night over at Ronwood Park. If you've been there, you know how great it is. If you haven't, come join us. It's your night off for no cooking. Our first Friday concerts continue to happen. This Friday will be our next first Friday concert, and that'll be at 8:00 PM over at Veridian. And as you know, the Veridian's got this little amphitheater site, so during the summer months, we do it outdoors in the amphitheater. Sometimes, we can't predict what the weather will do, and if it changes quickly, we turn it around and move it inside, and so it still happens. So, come, rain or shine, it'll be happening. And I don't have a graphic on this, but Councilmember, Council
That's my fault.
Director Alan Anderson mentioned about the open house here at City Hall. So, we're going to have tours here, and you can show the public around and let them see what City Hall looks like now that's been remodeled. National Light Out will be Tuesday, August 6th. If you have not already been contacted by the city or contacted us to let us know that you are hosting a National Light Out event that night, please do so. We'll get you on the list, and then council will share that list with you. So, both that are in your district or others that you may want to attend, you'll be aware of those. You can stop by and visit with your constituents that way. And something, as a thing of note, is South Valley Sewer District has changed their name. They are now called Jordan Basin Improvement District. The location's the same, what they do is the same, the name is different. So, there was some confusion. Sometimes, their name got mixed with others, so they decided to change it, and there you go. We have a new sewer district name. That is my re, oh, something that's not on the paper I want to tell you about. You're familiar with the Bridge 8600 South. There've been lots of questions when that's going to open. We've had a lot of conversations and discussions with UDOT. We met with them earlier this week. They have come up with a resolution and a solution what they're doing. They need to finish putting the paperwork together. We are in the process right now of preparing an email for you, and then we'll also get one together for the public. We are in the process right now of preparing an email for you, and then we'll also get one together for the public, so they'll know what's happened on there. But the, long and short of it is, they discovered what the problem is. They have found a solution to the problem, and they will begin to work on that. They think it'll take a couple of weeks to get the paperwork in place. Then you'll see more activity happening there as they make some of the repairs there. And we're hoping by the end of the year or early next year, it'll be open to the public. But details, the email will have a lot of details in that for you, which would take too long in this meeting. Know that it's been high on our minds and high on UDOT's minds, and progress is happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. With that bridge, it's been mostly the people that are on the west side that want to use it when their kids go to school. So hopefully, UDOT can come up with a solution sooner rather than later. But I will say, I'd rather have a safe bridge than a bridge that falls apart. So.
Right. They do have a solution. My guidance then was the first thing was safety, the second one was speed, and the third one was long endurance, long.
So we don't replace it in five years?
We don't want to attach that last for a week. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. From there, we'll turn the time over to Corbin. Do you guys have anything tonight?
Thank you. I have two departments that I'd like to give short presentation or reports to you. First, our deputy fire chief, Clint Paxton, oversees our fire operations. I'd like him to report to you about the firework season we've had this past month. Let you know what they've seen in the fire department from the 4th and the 24th. And then a short report and presentation from Denise Steck, our administrative services director.
For the days that fireworks were allowed, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, 5th, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, and the 25th, when fireworks were allowed, we had about 20 firework-related calls that we went to on that day, or on that eight-day period. 90% of those were on the 4th, 5th, and the 24th. And about 25% of those were dumpster-related, where they had improperly disposed of their fireworks.
Does the council have any questions? Nope.
I actually, sorry, I was quick on the trigger. From what we've learned this year, is there any adjustments we plan to make next year in regards to education and continued outreach with the community?
This wasn't our busiest year. It also wasn't the slowest year. I know it's something we want to look at and make, see if we need to make some adjustments for next year.
Sounds good. Again, thank you for what you guys did, because both Zach and Councilmember, we're all not doing the names, are we? Yes, Councilmember Jacob and I, who live out, obviously, in the out west, appreciated the less fireworks in our illegal area. So thank you again for all the work you guys did.
You bet.
Thank you. The one thing I will say is, if you do fireworks, make sure that they are not still burning when you put it in your garbage can.
Council Chair Jacob, if I can add the
It's an epidemic tonight.
Councilmember Jacob?
Vice Chair Lamb.
Vice Chair Lamb, if I can just mention real quick, the council has asked that the fire department present information about future firework maps, and that is scheduled for the September committee of the whole meeting.
Good evening, council. I wanted to take a few minutes to train you on our sales tax distribution report that I send to you each month. Several council members are new to the council, and others might want just a quick update on how to read that report and the information that I provide to you. So real quickly, we have a presentation that will help a little guide in this. So, local option taxes, the option taxes provided to towns and municipalities, it's 1% of the sales tax. So when you pay 7.25%, only 1% of that sales tax comes to cities. The rest of it goes to the county or wherever else. 50% of that 1% comes to the city directly where the purchase occurs. The other 50% of it goes into a pool of money from the state tax commission. So even when something is bought in St. George, half of that 1% goes into the state pool. Then the state pool distributes that money based on the population of the municipality. So we receive two pieces. We receive 50% of a 1%, and then another 3% of the 50%, which is really small. But we'll show you that math here in a second. Okay? So there's two pieces. One's the state pool, or population-based, and the other one is the local tax, or West Jordan tax. So we're on slide three. Distribution takes about 60 days after the sale, so if you buy something in July, the retailer collects that sales tax for the entire month. And then the state tax commission gives them the month of August to figure out how much they sold in July. Gives them till the end of August to get that to them. Then the state tax commission takes another month to get it to us. So it's 60 days later, which is why you will receive, you just received May sales in July. Okay? Next slide. This is a reason for us all to shop local, so I'm kind of glad that there's people here. Here's two examples, right? Here's one smaller. So if someone spends $100, the local option tax collected is $1, okay, out of the $100. If they spend that $100 at our Sam's Club, West Jordan, direct sales tax, we get 50 cents of that dollar, and then that population base, we only get 3% of the other 50 cents. So that's 2 cents. We get 52 cents. Whereas if they buy that $100 at Costco in another city, we only get 2 cents of that sales tax. Now let's make this bigger. Let's talk about someone buying a truck from Truck Ranch when it's built, right? That's a $50,000 truck. We would collect $500 in local option tax, which will be distributed to the tax commission. If they buy that truck at Truck Ranch, West Jordan gets $250 of that 500, plus another $8.40. If they buy that truck at another dealership somewhere else, we get $8.40. That's a very big difference and a really big reason for our residents to shop local, because that will keep their taxes lower as well and provide better services throughout our city. Next slide. This is a little bit about our budget philosophy. So one of the lines in the sales tax revenue report we provide to you says 5% year-over-year growth, or a 5% growth philosophy. And this is the reason why. In March of 2008, as everyone has kind of experienced, we had, was the beginning of the Great Recession, and everything kind of screeched to a halt. There was pretty decent growth before that, but then in 2009, the city's sales tax revenue dropped 10.2%. So immediately, in one year, they lost 10% of their sales tax revenue, which is significant. The next year, they lost another 8.2%. Again, another significant drop. In 2011, things started to recover slowly. The recovery began, and we had a gain of 1.2%. It took us until the end of 2015 to get to the same place we were in 2007 for sales tax revenue. So it took a long time to recover. The average year-over-year growth during that period of eight years, which we kind of would maybe call those Camelot years of 2012 to 2019, things were growing really consistently, 5% a year, every single year, 5% year-over-year growth. Then 2020 COVID hit, and everyone stayed home and thought, and everyone ordered groceries to their door, or they ordered online everything to their door. And so our sales tax grew tremendously, as did the revenues that people were spending. They were improving their homes or doing other things, right? Year-over-year, that was a screeching increase, 16% year-over-year for that fiscal year 2020 to 2022. And then, unpredictably, it halted, so it slowed. And in 2023, we're at 2.5%, and this year, we may get to 2.7%. So when we look at sales tax growth, we only count on 2019 as a base year, because there's been so much unpredictability in that period after that. So we took 2019, and we just have grown and relied on 5% growth year-over-year, and the rest of it, we consider one-time revenue. Things that we would only think of, oh, this is a gain one time, and we'll only spend it once. That has been a very good philosophy and a very conservative philosophy that the council supported in their budget preparation year-over-year. And it's really helped us to be able to build up our capital improvement project fund in years where this gain is in excess of what we'd expect moving forward. Next slide. This is kind of an illustration of what we saw, right? So 2008, there was $16.2 million, and I said 2015 was when we hit again, $16.8 million. And then you can see where we are now. We're right at about $34.5 million. A lot of that has to do with inflation. It doesn't have to do with excess spending, especially as we see spending has slowed down tremendously over the last two years. Next slide. So when you get the sales tax revenue report, there is a section of it that is the monthly distribution by fiscal year. So that's looking at the last three years and telling you each month, so that you can compare kind of what's going on with that month time periods, so January, February, March. It compares our budget to each of the months, so you can kind of see where that growth has occurred. And it outlines to you when there's a prior year adjustment, which is typically an audit by the state tax commission of retailers. And then it either takes money away from the city if they paid too much sales tax, or it gives additional money to the city if they didn't pay enough sales tax. We get both sides of it very often. And then one-time purchases, we review the list. We are provided the list by the state tax commission of every business in West Jordan, and we look to see what are those businesses and what's being sold. We're also provided a list of all the online retailers, and that would mean that someone in West Jordan has ordered something, and it's been delivered to their doorstep, whether it's a business or a resident. And when we see something really unusual, we would call it a one-time purchase. So recently, we have a couple data centers that are under construction, and they've bought some large pieces of equipment. They're not going to buy those on a regular basis. I'm also anticipating there's a possibility that the tax commission would take that back from the city and require that data center to call that depreciable, a depreciable asset, instead of just a purchase. I don't make that call. The state tax commission does, but I am watching for that, and I'm preparing for that in case that does occur. Okay? We also prepare at the bottom where you see actual to budget. So you're seeing July to May of each year. So you're seeing fiscal year '22, that's July through May of that year. And then you'll see, what did we budget that year? And you see, we underbudgeted on purpose, because we used our philosophy. 2023, same thing, but it was a little less, right? There was a little less headroom there. And then 2024, where we are. Right now, we're ahead of budget, because we did decide to bring sales tax revenues back a little, not knowing what was going to happen this year. Next slide. All right, the next thing is the sales by source. So that shows you that local sales tax, so that 1% baseline. And then transportation tax is point, it's a quarter of a quarter percent in addition to the local option tax. And that money is dedicated to streets, and we are using it to fund our streets department. And so that's how we use that transportation tax. Both of them are set at a baseline, and then if it's, and then we grow at 5%. So then we're saying, all right, we're going to fill up the bucket for what we had last year. Then we're going to fill up, the next bucket will be 5% growth, and then the next bucket will be one-time money, in excess of what we thought we would get. So that's that final line there, something more than what we thought we would get, but we don't believe that we will be able to count on it going forward. Okay? The next section is by type. So this tells you how much of the sales tax is that one-half percent that shop local happens. And then the other part is the population base. So it's something that was bought here or any other city in the state, any business within the state, and then that 3% is distributed to us. Right now, we receive more sales tax from our population base than from our local sales. It's about 55% of our distribution versus 45% from our shop local or businesses or deliveries to home. So if you order from Amazon and you get it delivered to your home, we get the sales tax for that as well. But population-based is providing the majority of that. Now that gets adjusted each year as they look at populations that grow throughout cities. So there's only 100% of a pie, right? Your piece can get smaller and smaller if you do not have any growth in your city. So once you're built out, or once you're landlocked, or once you're done developing, or if you start shifting that to just being industrial or commercial, that can influence your population format. Now, the good part of industrial manufacturing or retail is also that we get the extra sales tax. So that certainly outweighs the spending of a residence. But our population base has been adjusted down slightly this year, because the state tax commission and the governor's office of budget and planning have said that our population decreased by about 2,000 people. I can't say why. Next sales, next slide. All right, and then I give you some narrative when I give you that report. So I'm pretty much saying, well, how much did we get better or worse? And I usually put red if it's worse and green if it's better, right? So we got, you know, so much money extra than we got last year at the same month. Then I say, well, here's what inflation was. So if we went up 2%, like this month, we went up 2%. Inflation was 2.5%. So that tells me that costs went up 2.5% for the same goods, and we only got 2% more sales tax. So people are actually spending less or getting less for the money that they're actually putting out. So that's why CPI or cost, Consumer Price Index, is so important. Next slide. And finally, I kind of let you know if there's some unusual activity that I'm aware of or that I see in the data. I let you know year-to-date what this is looking like against our budget. And then I'm looking at and letting you know who are our top businesses, because we really want to make sure that we're reaching out to them and appreciating what they provide to our community overall. It's a lot of information, a really short amount of time, but I'd be happy to meet with any of you on the sales tax revenue report or to answer any questions that you might have.
So you probably don't have the answer, but I want to know with those 2,000 people, why they didn't take their cars?
Right?
Just curious.
Right.
Is there a way to challenge that, that we lost 2,000 people?
We've actually challenged it in the past, or I have challenged it in the past, and it does not ever get anywhere. West Valley also lost population, and they believe that it's because the household size has decreased, because people are not having as many children. I
Except all the kids are moving in with their parents.
Yeah, exactly.
Because they can't afford to buy a house.
That's true.
I had another question, and I lost it. I have to think really fast.
Sure.
Councilmember Sholten?
This isn't sales tax-related, but it is tax. I've learned about, I've been learning about gas tax and fuel taxes. And perhaps, if maybe you could just explain to her, to us, how our city receives fuel tax? And maybe I'll see if I have been learning correctly or not.
Sure. So there are two places that fuel tax comes from. One is a pool called Class C Road Funds, right? So it's by fuel tax. Class C Road Funds is distributed to cities based on lane miles and the type of road. So it's a Class B or C road, and the amount of lane miles within the city. So a portion of the gas tax goes to fund the Class B and C roads. We don't have any Class B roads in our city, but we do get Class C roads in our city. Right now, we get about $4.5 million from the Class C road distribution. In addition, part of the gas tax is the transportation tax, the quarter of the quarter that we just talked about as well. So I get two reports. One says this is how much was sold in retail businesses in the city, and that's the local option tax. And then I get another report that shows how much fuel was purchased in the city, and then the transportation tax that's distributed based on that formula.
So a follow-up question. Is it important for us and our residents to purchase gasoline in West Jordan versus outside of West Jordan? Because you're saying it's based on lane miles. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Sure. So that secondary line that we saw, local option tax, that's the 1%. That transportation tax, that's based on fuel that's sold within our city. And so certainly, we get more distribution when this fuel is sold in our city versus not in our city. Same, the same exact formula exists.
Buy everything in the city.
I remember what I was gonna say. On that screen where it showed our in-city taxes versus what we get outside, is there, I know you have so much on your plate, I'm so sorry, is there a way to see that percentage year-to-year for us in West Jordan to see how well we're doing in increasing? that percentage year-to-year for us in West Jordan to see how well we're doing in increasing our in-city taxes? Because it would be nice to see, you know, the work that our staff and that we are doing with our economic development and see how well we are scaling that up.
Sure.
Awesome.
Yeah. So for a period of greater than three years, because really only three years doesn't show you much, right? But if we maybe did a scale that was a ten-year period, I think that would be a good story to tell.
I think so too, and it'll give us motivation to continue doing the work we are of getting that more, more insight. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Great.
Yes, thank you. And I wanted to thank you and the staff for always, I don't know how to put this, since I've been on the, on the council, we've always projected low on those numbers. And I'm grateful for that because every time we projected low, it's always been more than what we projected. Rather than doing the opposite of projecting too high and then finding out, oh, we didn't get that much in taxes. So I think it's been a good thing for our staff and for you and to always look at, you know, not projecting too high so that we don't come into that problem. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
All right. Now that all the fun stuff's out of the way, no, just kidding. The fun stuff's coming up now with our public hearings. So we have four public hearings tonight. In each public hearing, there will be a time for the public to comment. So if you want to comment about that certain public hearing, you can only comment once during that period. So for example, if you want to comment about a, a public hearing come up later after the first one, wait until that one and don't do the public comment now. So our first public hearing will be Resolution Number twenty-four dash zero three zero regarding the donation of an American two hundred and fifty Patriots plaque from Utah State Society Daughters of the American Revolution. And that will be placed in our West Jordan Veterans Memorial Park. And Corey Frolik will be presenting this. Thank you, Corey.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight to present a resolution that proposes the donation installation of American two fifty Patriots plaque from the Utah State Society Daughters of the American Revolution at West Jordan Veterans Memorial Park. As was mentioned earlier, the plaque commemorates the milestone two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the birth of the United States of America and the Patriots who through their contributions to the cause achieved American independence. The marker will recognize, honor, and thank veterans and all active duty troops from every branch of service from the Revolutionary War to today. The plaque, I don't know if you can go to the next slide, Warren. The plaque location that we've chosen will be in our memorial gardens. You can kind of see the little yellow pin there. It's on the east side of the gardens. Right as you enter, it'll be one of the first things that you see. You can see in between two trees in that mulch is where we're proposing to put it. We have bench pads on each side. And then if you look further down, you can kind of see in that picture, past that second bench, there's already boulders there. So this plaque, if you go to the next slide, Warren, will be placed on a boulder similar to this. This is one that was placed at Boise, Idaho. So the plaque will be, like I say, installed on a boulder, but the plaque itself is twenty-four inches by twenty-four inches approximate size and it's five sixteenths inch thick. So it's sixteenth inch is thick. So it's been built to withstand up to over a hundred years of, of maintenance and weather conditions. So in conclusion, installing the plaque in our memorial gardens will not only honor the Patriots of the Revolutionary War, but it will enhance our community's cultural heritage. It honors our history, educates the public, and instills pride in our community. I appreciate your time. Happy to answer any questions. And I have an, an army of, of incredible ladies. Let's see what I did there, Mary, an army of incredible ladies that could answer questions if you have any as well.
Thank you, Corey. Do you have any questions from the council? Okay. Well, thank you. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing to public comments. Now is your opportunity to talk about this certain subject. If you wish to speak, please come forward and you'll have three minutes and we'll hear from you. Rob?
Thank you, Chair. I just had a quick question. As I was reading through the materials, looking at the proposal, there were several options that were available. Several of them included putting the plaque on a boulder or a cement frame. And I'm just curious if that's been ascertained, what type of displaying is going to be recommended for this particular monument? And then also, I just wanted to express that I think that as the residents of the city, we are going to be in great favor of having this monument. It's something that's going to bring our thoughts back to the people who sacrificed everything so that we could have what we have today. And therefore, this is a fantastic thing in a fantastic place within our Veterans Memorial Parkway that people can sit and contemplate the sacrifices that have taken place. So I'm in great favor of this and I think our communities will be as well.
Thank you. Any other comments from the room? Please state your name and residence.
Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. As you know, we've got five little boys. You've seen them at many different city events and we're frequently at Veterans Memorial Park. I want to speak specifically to the proposal for the location right by the monuments for the different branches of service. I really, really like that idea. Our boys are very curious, very they question everything. So when we go out there for some of the things like the Memorial Day event or just to spend a little bit of time in the park, they'll ask us about the different monuments. They'll ask us about Navy and dad, was it your grandpa that served in the Navy? And we'll be able to point that out. We'll be able to point out family members who have served in the Marines, who have served in the Army. Having this monument right there will be able to help us point to family history and show a little bit further back how far our ties go to those who have worked so hard to preserve this democracy that we have. Very much like the idea for it being there, I think as a parent, it'll make it a little bit easier for me to have some of those conversations with my kids. And they'll be the ones asking me the questions rather than me having to try to push it out to them. So very much in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak? Please come forward and give us your name and your residence.
I'm Leslie Gates. I live in West Jordan. I am a member of the Salt Lake Valley Chapter Daughters of the American Revolution. And the plaque that we're proposing to have installed at the park is one that I know that I will bring my grandchildren, who also live in West Jordan, to, to show them, like a previous commenter mentioned, that it's a point of patriotic pride to show and be able to bring up the topic of the founding of our country, the true founding of our country, the purposes and the dedication that our founding fathers and mothers had in bringing liberty to themselves and their posterity, and that's us. And I'm looking forward to not just bringing my grandchildren, but I also serve as volunteer in my church for boys the age of Cub Scouts in Activity Days. And we do field trips every once in a while, and I look forward to bringing them on field trips to take a look at the branches of government, sorry, the branches of military in, in our government that have, that serve and be able to tell them and ask them about any of their aunts, aunts, uncles, cousins, grandparents that may serve or have served in the military and be able to bring that up and do some little history lessons. So that would provide a wonderful piece and at that particular venue to just expand the ability to teach and promote patriotism. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else here tonight, feel free to come forward. Okay, we'll move to Mr. Anderson. Do you have anybody online that would wish to speak?
There are two individuals online and neither of which have raised their hand.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I will close the public comment for this public hearing resolution. And we will move to discussion of the resolution or a motion.
I'm just waiting for you to call on me.
Councilmember Green. I know, like, this is in line, so I'm gonna say Councilmember Green.
Thank you. As somebody who spent, by the way, if you do the math, my, my service in the United States military was about fifteen percent of that two hundred and fifty years. So yes, I'm old and I spent a lot of time in, but as somebody who spent almost forty years in the oldest military organization of the United States that was actually founded before the American Revolution by about a hundred and forty years, I'm glad to see this come. So sorry, I do get emotional about the country and obviously spent a lot of time in uniform dealing with this. The nice thing is, is that if I recall right from my genealogy, I actually did have some ancestors that were part of the American Revolution back in the Massachusetts colony area. So I love this and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. We don't have an order here, but I'll go with Councilmember Bloom.
I have to say, that was a surprise. I did too, back in the Massachusetts area. As a, as a daughter of a veteran and a granddaughter of a veteran and who has lived my whole life on base, and then when civilian life was a whole new world to me. And I also have an aunt who's in the chapter of American Revolution, Society Daughters of American Revolution up in Idaho. You guys are dear to my heart. I know so much about the organization and to be honored with what you guys present to us today to have in our city. Thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart and thank you from my family and everybody for what you do and the service that you provide. And I look forward to saying yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
I'd just like to voice my gratitude to the Daughters of the American Revolution for choosing West Jordan City. I know there's only one plaque per state. And I'm very grateful that that plaque will be in our city. I'm very proud of that as well. So thank you.
Councilmember Bedore?
I do will add the same as the others. My, my father spent about fifteen percent of that two hundred and fifty as well. Fought in a war. And I spent many, many years on bases where I would spend about a year and then we'd have to move. And that was my life for a long time. But what I'm very excited about, I wanted to echo Councilmember Shelton about the pride I have in our city being chosen for this. And I hope that we do this, do your gesture proud with what we do. And that we earn that pride that we have in you doing this. I'm very grateful for knowledge being given to the American Revolution. Because with wars, wars are fought on ideas and ideals. But often with the idea that you're fighting for your home. But I I think this was an incident with the American Revolution where they were literally fighting for a home. Knowing that there would be no place to go if they didn't have this happen. And I'm very grateful to have the opportunity to have this here, to have the field trips so that we can have the discussions and we can have people know about something that really mattered to this country. So thank you very much for the honor.
And I'd like to say thank you as well for choosing West Jordan. When I was a kid, the park was just called the West Jordan City Park. Kind of boring, huh? But our former city council members, I'm not sure what year was changed to that name, but they chose to name it the Veterans Memorial Park and it was a great choice back then. There's, there's our forefathers of West Jordan, making a great name for our veterans and also for this opportunity to have this plaque here in our city and in the state of Utah. So thank you. And with that, I will give the time over to Councilmember Green.
I'm gonna move to approve. Okay. Resolution Number twenty-four dash thirty regarding the donation of America two fifty Patriots plaque from the Utah State Society Daughters of American Revolution to be placed in West Jordan Veterans Memorial Park.
Councilmember Whitelock?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by Councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to the motion? Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote. Is that, Warren, will you be doing that? Okay.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Thank you. I show that motion passes six to zero.
Well said. Six, zero. I like that vote. So thank you once again to the Daughters of the American Revolution for this opportunity and we look forward to having that placed here in our city. Thank you. Yes. We can clap. All right. We will now move to our second public hearing of the night. This is ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-three, a petition requesting approval of a master development agreement plan for, I'm gonna guess this name is one eleven, or is it one eleven? Either way, subject to the approval of ordinance number twenty-four dash twenty-four, amending the general plan use map for one eleven. And we'll turn the time over to Nate Ship. Is Nate Ship here? Okay. Come forward and give us your name and who you're with and we are grateful to hear from you. Just pick one and speak into one.
Is that the best way? Thank you. Good evening, council members. My name is Chase Andrezi here on behalf of the applicant. Been working a long time with your staff, with some of the council members to prepare this development plan that we have for one eleven. We've worked tirelessly through this process. As many of you know, this application is coming under a new zone that the city created, I believe, back in twenty twenty, the Integrated Housing Zone, the I H D zone specifically for this project. And that zone, the intent of that is obviously to create some additional housing opportunities to include a moderate income housing component of the project and to integrate a number of different housing types within the same development. So if, if you've been on the council for a while or seen some of the original renderings for this project, you've seen, as you've looked at your plan tonight, how far that's come from just having a number of single-family homes within one fifty-acre parcel to having up to seven different housing types. So if I may, I'll just jump into a few points that I wanted to raise and, and bring to your attention as you discuss this item tonight. The project is called one eleven. It's situated near the north boundary of the city. On the west side is U one eleven. On the north side is seven thousand south and seventy-four hundred south cuts about the bottom third of that project. So just so you're oriented to where that is, that's where that's located. Taylor, is there a, a presentation that you had? Oh, thank you. Perfect. Who's running that? Right here? Okay. Thank you, Warren. So you'll see there where that location, where that project's located and kind of how it's oriented. It is a little bit of a unique site in the sense that it runs pretty long, north to south. It's got the big Harper pit on the east side of it. We've worked with them as we've planned this development and some of the utilities that go through there. Warren, do you mind going to the next slide? Thank you. The applications that you have in front of you tonight are three. The first is an amendment to the future land use map to change it from business research to medium density. The second application is, next slide, Warren. Thank you. Amendment to the zoning map, changing it from business research park to the integrated housing development zone. And then the third application is for an MDA and an MDP approving the development is set forth in those, those documents. So what you have in front of you now is the concept plan that we worked on with staff. I'll point to just a couple of things. It's the orientation's actually shifted, so north is to the left of the page. You've got west on the south and east on the top side. You can't see it there. You see the, my picture, but seventy-four hundred south will connect to U one eleven directly through the project. For now, that will just dead end at the rail line. We were asked a number of times whether that would connect to the existing seventy-four hundred south. And until future development occurs, that seventy-four hundred south will be built to full width, but it will, it will terminate at, at the rail line there. On the north end of the project, seven thousand south, we will build the other half of that road, I believe. Woodside has a development in the county that's just on the north side of this project. It's outside of the city limits and they have built that road on seven thousand south. We'll complete the other half of that. And that will be our second connection to U one eleven. And until future development occurs, the ingress and egress for the project will be limited to one eleven. A couple of other things I'd like to point out on this map, this lays out what are three hundred and twenty-four A couple of other things I'd like to point out on this map, this lays out what are 324 units and let me break those down for you just a little bit. There, there are a number of different types. The first type that we have are front-load, single-family detached lots. These are village lots, these are a little bit larger, 60-foot minimum frontage. We have a front-load, single-family detached cottage lot. These are a little smaller in size. I believe our smallest is 4,100 square feet and a 40-foot minimum frontage on those. We also have a rear-load, single-family lot. Those are kind of on the southeast side, kind of in the dark orange color, near the bottom of the project. That's a rear-load, single-family home. It'll simply just provide another housing type within this project. It also has some aesthetic appeal in the sense that you're not going to have backyards along 7,400 South. The front yard will be facing 74, so as you're driving through there, you're not seeing just a vinyl fence and people's backyards. The, the fourth type of residential unit that we'll have in there are twin homes. Those are in the pink color along the western, northern, northwestern boundary. Those units, they're platted as a, as an individual lot, but they share a wall and in your master development plan, in your packet, there are some renderings of what that unit type would look like. The fifth, sixth and, fifth and sixth types of, of units are townhomes and we have both front-loaded and rear-loaded townhomes within the project. And again, in the intent of the integrated housing ordinance, we've designed those to be anywhere from as small as 1,000 square feet up to 1,500 square feet, some from two to four bedrooms, options for basements that individuals looking for different sizes of homes and townhomes have, they have additional options there. And then the final color that you'll see in terms of residential units is the moderate income townhomes. Again, the integrated housing ordinance requires that 3% of the overall units be moderate income housing. That's defined by state code. I don't recall specifically what it is on the, off the top of my head, but it's, it's essentially a home that is for sale at 80% AMI for the county, something of that nature. And so, in, in compliance with those requirements of that zone, there will be 10 of those units within the project. I'll point out just a few more things on this concept plan before we move to a couple of other slides. The integrated housing ordinance requires 20% of this area be open space. We have listed there 10.2 acres, about approximately 21%. Within that are a number of amenities. There's a clubhouse, 2,000 square feet minimum size with a pool. There's a dog park that we will be installing, it'll be enclosed, a place for people to take their dogs and, you know, get them out, stretch their legs. A playground on the west side of the park, on the west side of the project and then some larger manicured areas that an HOA will maintain that are simply usable, programmable space by the residents within the project. There is also on the south side along 7,400 South, a regional trail that the city has planned on their open space master plan that will connect in the future to the west and to the east as additional development occurs, but that'll be a, a great amenity for the residents living here as well. And then the final thing I wanted to point out is the commercial area. The integrated housing ordinance requires that there be 5% of the overall area, overall acreage designated for commercial use. This is about 10%, 10.1% as commercial usage and it's, it's a, again, unique site, but that little corner we believe will do actually really well in terms of commercial use and we'll have that road 7,400 South built out as part of phase one to promote that commercial development and bring that in as soon as we can. The overall density of this project is 6.1 units per acre. The integrated housing ordinance allows up to 6.5 or even, I believe, over seven with some density buy-up. We tried to keep it in that six-unit range. We simply believe it lives a little bit better when it's about that range, given these housing types that are in there. We've also planned for quite a bit of parking. As you look at this particular plan, I have another slide, so why don't I hold off on the parking? We'll go to that one. Warren, can you go to the next one? Thank you. This is just a slide depicting the open space. Again, you'll see specifically that the clubhouse is positioned near the middle of the project. Everyone will have access to that, whether they live in a single-family home or a townhome, they'll be able to access and use the pool and the clubhouse and all of the amenities within there. Again, just a list of the amenities, number one being your playground, two, your dog park, three, your clubhouse, and then four lists some of the larger open space areas that are programmable and usable by the residents. Just some depictions of what the clubhouse will look like. I'll, I know, do I have 10 minutes? Is that what I've got? Councilmember Lamb?
I haven't timed you, so keep going until I say stop.
You got it. I'll, I'll try not to be too long-winded. Again, just some depictions, these, these are actually included in our master development plan. So, the rendering that you're seeing or the elevations that you're seeing there for the clubhouse are what are going to be built. Next, Warren. This is just a fencing plan showing where we will have different types of fencing. We'll have obviously precast fencing along the major corridors, transportation corridors to shield sound and sight from those residents. This project actually, actually sits down a little bit from U 111, which is helpful in terms of mitigating some of those sounds from that high-traffic corridor. We've also designed some open space along the west side of the boundary to further buffer some of those units from U 111. And then again, the rest of the project will have different types of fencing consistent with city code and, and the uses that are there. This just depicts the phasing plans. I mentioned earlier, 7,400 South and 7,000 South will be built as part of phase one. Those will be built out to their, build out width in compliance with the master development plan. And then phase two will consist of the remaining part of the residential units and the commercial. What this exhibit depicts is just some of the connectivity within the site. One of the things that we look for as we plan sites like this is how residents get around to one another. And as you'll see there, we have sidewalks, not only along the streets and the corridors there, but also behind the units, in between the units, trying to get people from where they live to where they want to play. This is just depicting some of the road types that'll be within the project. These are all also included and those cross-sections are included within our master development plan. We've, I will call out, we've added a provision to the development agreement at the last minute. I had some communication with staff about a request from the council to include some additional language acknowledging that not only are these in the development plan, but that we're going to construct them, including those traffic calming measures that are identified within the master development plan according to the design that's in there. I understand that the city is working through some additional code language regarding traffic calming measures and things of that nature. We've worked really hard with Nestor and, and some of the other public work staff to make sure that those are in here and we've added that additional language to acknowledge that we will build those to the design that's in there. This is the parking exhibit that I was mentioning earlier. As you'll see there, we have just over 1,300 parking stalls and how we break that down is really spaces within the garage, spaces on a driveway and surface spaces that are not on the street. And so, as you look at that and break that down per unit, it is approximately 4.2 stalls per unit. And we acknowledge that some people have more than that, more cars than that, but a lot of people have fewer than that and as we-
And some don't park in the garage.
And some don't park in the garage. Some people love to use their garage for storage and we recognize that. And so, we've added approximately 105 stalls that are listed there in kind of that mustard color that are off-street parking. So, 101, thank you, Taylor. 101 off-street parking. Go ahead, Warren, thank you. I mentioned one of these items, these are some of the, some of the last-minute matters that I addressed with staff that they brought up after the packet had been posted and some questions were raised regarding a few items and inconsistencies within the design guidelines and city code. The, I'll just say, we, we don't have any issue with these. In fact, as I worked through these with staff, we realized that this was our intent to have these things in place. We simply just overlooked those. So, page four, no design guidelines, will conflict with any city ordinances. That's understandable and, and what we intend to do. So, any changes that need to be made as, as part of that, we're, we're fine with. Park strips must not contain sod or turf, also in agreement with that. We understand that most cities now have landscaping and water-wise requirements and we fully intend to follow those as well. And that, that addresses number three and four of those bulleted items and again, we're, we're fine with those. Again, just some additional design guidelines. One of the things that we often look at, and I know it's important to cities as well, is how the units are going to be broken up as they're laid out and platted and built. We obviously are interested in making sure that an integrated housing development has housing that looks integrated as well and doesn't have the same cookie cutter lot size, same home repeated. And that's simply what this exhibit is depicting, is some of the design guidelines that will be applicable to the, the development. Again, just a few renderings. You've, you've had these in your packet and had, had an opportunity to look at these. Obviously, these are simply renderings, but as you look through that packet and what those design guidelines entail, you get a feel for what types of units will be there. There will be a mixture of two and three-car garages and the single-family homes. All of the townhomes will have a garage and I believe there are 26 units that have a single-car garage. So, again, something a little smaller, a little more affordable for, for an individual looking to own a home and then all the rest of them will have a two-car garage. Some additional, I, I won't spend too much time on these. We can come back to them, obviously, if you have any questions, but we'll just go through a few of these. Yeah, I'm just going to keep, I'm going to have Warren just keep flying, I'm going to, okay, here we go. This is the important slide. So, kind of as I wrap things up here, just wanted to mention again how grateful we are to have this here in front of the city council. We've been working out for a while. Some of you weren't on the council when we were last in front of you. I believe that was February of '23 that we were in front of you and it, it's been a process, but it's actually been good. I think we appreciate the work that's been done. A lot of things have changed. We, we have come forward with a project that we feel really comfortable with. We feel confident in our ability to have these units built, have them sold, have residents live in these and own these homes and be proud of, of what we've helped accomplish here. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does any of the council have any questions for that? Oh, Councilmember Whitelock?
Thank you. Even if you've alluded to these things, I'm going to have you tell them again.
Sure, happy to.
We're looking for homes in all income levels for our, for our future residents to be able to own. How will you help make that happen in this development?
Yeah, great question. I wish every developer had a golden answer for you. I think I can answer it specific to this development, which is what your question is and how it's phrased. I think one of the great things about this development is the integration of the different types of units. Oftentimes, as a developer, if you're coming in and looking at a piece of property, you look at the minimum lot size and you just repeat that over and over and over again. And, and that's just the easiest way to come in and plan it. That's not what we've done here, obviously. The integrated housing zone requires more than that. But what this project has enabled us to do is to have lots that are 40 feet wide. They're 110 feet deep and they're, you know, approximately 41, 4200 square feet. That's definitely a more affordable home. The difficulty and what home buyers are experiencing is, okay, I've got a smaller lot, but if I put this same-sized home on a smaller lot that I would put on a larger lot, it's not affordable, right? And so, what we're doing is we're working with a builder who has had to change some of their expectations in terms of what they're offering so that they can meet these housing needs, given the lot sizes and the differentiation that exists within this project. We're also integrating one-car garage townhomes. They're a little bit smaller, they're only 1,000 square feet. That's a smaller home. My family of five probably wouldn't fit in that, but it, it's an option within a townhome project that again, is a lot easier as a developer to just do repeatedly the same unit over and over and over again. And so, as we've gone through this process with staff, complied with the requirements of the integrated housing zone, we've been able to offer housing options that really range from affordable to less affordable, right? I don't think the idea was to only build affordable housing within the income, integrated housing zone. It was a moderate income housing requirement. And so, we've tried to, we've tried to do that and we recognize that there are always things that can be done to, to make that more affordable and we're pushing for what we can there.
I'm, I'm not sure that answered my question, but just know that the desire of our city, not just this council, not just the elected officials, but of our city is that we have homes that people can buy.
Sure.
That's the desire. So, the next question is, I know you said it was in phase two, but I don't know when phase two begins and when will you start marketing your commercial piece?
We actually have already had talks with commercial users for that piece. One of the things that they obviously look for is that the infrastructure's in place. And so, to answer your question specifically, we would feel comfortable putting a sign up as soon as we have that infrastructure in place.
Okay, so, so it could happen in phase one because you'll do the roads then?
Correct.
Thank you. Excellent. This, this is really just on behalf of Council Chair Jacob. When you did come, he asked why you were, why you were basically creating a segregation and he suggested that maybe you put townhomes and single-family homes, you know, disperse them, not just have these guys versus these guys. So, I just remember he said that and looking at the plan and that wasn't, that wasn't done. I'm not a developer and I just, but I know that was important to him and he felt like that was important. I found it curious that, thank you first of all for putting moderate-income houses in there. I found it interesting that they're all grouped together though. Is that really how they're going to be or can they be one unit here and one unit there and one unit over there?
We actually added a provision in the development agreement that calls that out, that those can be interspersed. If you look at those and the way that they're designed, that same unit type is actually included in other buildings. So, we had gone back and forth with this on staff. We could show it other ways in the, in the concept plan, but the development agreement does say that we can intersperse those throughout the project.
Remember, I'm just making you vocalize some things?
You bet, you bet.
Okay, I think those are all of my questions you answered that. And I appreciate you being amenable to things that Councilmember Green and I wanted added. Thank you.
For sure.
Anybody else have any questions? Oh, the lights just came on. We'll go to Councilmember Bloom.
I've never, I'm not fast enough on there. It was more of an appreciation with the, with what Councilmember Green and Whitelock had brought forth when it comes to the waterways. You know, we have a history of our HOAs just not even caring and they water too early, too soon, too late and too much. And so, I appreciate having that in there because if we can get our HOAs and our developers and everybody on board with this water-wise, just think of how much more water we will save. And so, that is very important to this council and, and thank you for taking that seriously for us because that is a, that's a priority point for us.
For sure.
Councilmember Shelton?
Thank you. In relation to the 101 off-street surface parking spots, are they, are any of those set aside for guest parking or all of them? Can you talk about guest parking and those, those parking spots?
Yeah, that's a great question and that's something we have to look at as we plan parking. We, we haven't gotten to that level of detail yet. What we have found, as we've done this in other places, is that as, our magic number internally is four unit, four parking stalls per unit and we have found that that usually accommodates guest parking as well. So, I don't have a specific answer for your question. So I don't have a specific answer for your question of where guest parking is, or if there's a specific number dedicated for that. But we have found that that number of four parking stalls per unit minimum usually is, is adequate to provide for guest parking as well.
Thank you. Another question. We, we've seen in the city, a lot of a lot of new construction that was intended for owner occupied units. And they've been turning into more and more rentals. It's not really something that I believe we have power to mitigate on the level of the city council. But is there any plan on your part to help them be owner occupied homes?
Yeah, and I think, you know, that really comes down to who we choose to work with as we build these. The builder that we are currently working with sells homes to individuals, right? They don't build homes en masse and sell a project for rent. And so we're taking those steps upfront to pick someone that we feel comfortable working with that can do that, that can provide those homes for sale to an individual. Now, that doesn't mean that mom and dad won't come and buy a unit and rent it to their son or daughter, right? And in fact, that's probably a great option for that son or daughter for the time being and, and, and might be a great option for, for them and for, you know, future residents of your city. But to answer your specific question, we are working with the builder who does provide homes for sale.
What we want to try to avoid, and again, and I know that we can't require this, but we want to try and avoid like your entire project being sold off to a, a corporation that, that builds homes for rental purposes. That's something we, we really hope to avoid. Something that we're, we're passionate about in West Jordan City. And I think you already tried to answer this question, but maybe if you could just rephrase it. At what point do you believe the commercial portion of this site will be built? Like between phases one and two, or is it going to be just kind of piece and parcel as, as, as you go?
Yeah. You know, it's, it's not the field of dreams, right? You, you can't just say, hey, we've got a commercial site. Who wants it? It depends upon the user, what their intended use is. And I'm not trying to skirt the answer here. I guess what I'm trying to say is, I can't tell you, right? What we can do as a developer is make sure that those utilities are in, that they're stubbed to the site, that the site's graded, that we can do everything that we can to make it more appealing to commercial users so that when they do come and look after we've started marketing that site, it makes a lot more sense to them than just seeing a big pile of, you know, dirt that they're going to have to do a bunch of work to, to make useful for them. So our commitment is to build 7,400 south to full right of way width, to stub access to the commercial site, to stub utilities to the commercial site, and to make it as appealing as we can. I mean, obviously there's an interest that we have in making sure that that moves as quickly as it can. And, and that's our commitment.
I know that it's hard to put the cart before the horse and the, the horse is rooftops, right? With the, with the commercial cart. We have seen, we have seen developments, not this exact zone, but mixed use developments in our city where the residential get part gets built out and then the commercial part just sits and sits and sits. And it's very frustrating to us as a council to see that happen.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. So I just had one quick question and I don't know if you can answer this. I haven't been told, but the train tracks right there, I know they've been pulled up. And maybe Corbin, maybe you have the answer. Are, are tracks going back in or is that just going to stay a trail? Does anybody know?
I, I believe we've, we've been in talks with Kennicott and Staker, who are the owners and I believe Kennicott has an easement for those rail lines. I don't think they intend on doing anything with them, right?
So they don't intend, but they're, they're not, they're not going to open it up. It's, it's going to stay.
We would love to.
Like a rail trail.
Right, right.
And you never know, maybe one day UTA will want to purchase the right of ways to that. So, okay, well, that's all we have. Thank you for your presentation. And if we have any other questions, we'll let you know.
Thanks.
So at this time, we will now open up the public hearing to public comments. If there's anybody in the room that would like to step forward and have a public comment, you have three minutes. Oh, except you. I'm just kidding. Coming up, Chris.
Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. A lot of times it feels like when a developer comes, that there's people who speak in opposition to something, there's quite a bit of weight given to that. If nobody shows up, then there's a question as to whether the public supports or is in opposition. So I figured I'd go ahead and chime in. Conceptually, I, I very much like the idea. However, I think council member Whitlock hit on all the different things that I was thinking. With the integrated housing, one of the things that I like about it is the idea of the integration rather than the segmentation. We have right now, my family and I, we're in process of moving from a neighborhood where all the homes are pretty much identical. There's about three different floor plans scattered throughout the 70 or so homes that are right there. But the neighborhood's pretty similar. The neighborhood that we're going to has everything from larger lots with single family residents to cottages, townhomes. You get a much wider variety of folks in the neighborhood. There's a lot more diversity. And it just makes life a lot better. And having having that real integration of different housing types is one of the things that I would love to see. When you look at Daybreak, that's one of the things that they pride themselves on. They've made like some of the twin homes out there look like the larger homes that are kind of mixed in with it. So you get everything really truly integrated. You have all these different housing types that are mixed in with each other rather than kind of a block of larger homes here, block of townhomes here. It'd be really nice to have everything a little bit more combined like that. I do like the idea for the playground, the, the dog park. I do question the dog park right next to the retention basin a, a little bit, but overall, conceptually, I really like the idea and very much in favor of it. That said, the devil's in the details. And I know there are a couple of you that look at those MDAs very, very well. And would defer to you to make sure that all the i's are dotted and all the t's are crossed. But seeing as there aren't too many residents here, I wanted to come out and speak conceptually in favor of what's been proposed. I, I think it's a, a very matured plan, very close to being ready to go and very much prefer this over what's there right now. The current zoning, by the way, I do think this is an improvement over that. That was more of a placeholder. I think what's being proposed as far as overall zoning goes, 100% behind that change. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak with public comments? Mr. Anderson, do we have any online?
Yes, there are three individuals online, none of which have raised their hand.
Okay, thank you. After, yeah. So, okay, I will go ahead and close the public comments for this public hearing. And just a reminder here, we do need two motions tonight. And correct me if I'm wrong here, Mr. Anderson. There's just two. What's the third one?
Yeah, so there's two ordinances on your agenda. The first ordinance is approving the MDA and MDP subject to the subsequent approval of the map amendments. And then the second ordinance is approving both map amendments together, which is the land use map and zoning map changes. So in a sense, there's three or four different things, but they're all within two different orders.
But two motions.
Two motions, you know, one for each ordinance is what I would recommend.
And then my second question is, I saw a note there, do we need to do a motion for ordinance 2424 before 2423?
Okay, 23 is first.
I read that wrong. Okay. I read something where it said we needed to amend the plan first, but, okay.
Yeah, we always do the agreement first, but because it's built into it, it's subject to the subsequent approval of the map amendments. Yep, agreement first, then amendments. So it's in sequential number order, 23 then 24.
Perfect. Well, with that, I will turn the time over to the council for any discussion. Oh, I'm like, I'm looking back and forth. Council member Green.
Uh, we're having fun tonight. I, I remember the first plan that actually complied with city ordinance. Way back when, that's at least two years ago, if not, if not three. Uh, it was almost three years ago, wasn't it? Um, and we saw it in the land use committee. And we all looked at that and said, oh, hell no. Because it was all these little, as, as, as Mr. Andreasy mentioned, it was all of these little cookie cutter houses that fit on the land. And it was, it was not, it was not a very appealing plan, I, I have to tell you. And over the course of the next three years, we've, we've seen this develop to where I think this is going to be a good development and actually going to be a good experiment in the city. Because I think what we, what we see is, and, and we're actually going back to some kinds of developments that we saw, that we've seen if you drive through Salt Lake City or where I used to live in East Midvale, where you've got a townhome and across the street is a regular house and down the street is a big house and a small house and you've got those. I think that honest, and the other positive about this is that this is one of the few developments that we have seen. I think we, we got some concessions in Jones Ranch a few years ago. But I think this is one of the few developments that we've seen that actually includes a true moderate income housing element. And I think that, to me, that's fantastic. What I want to declare, and hopefully there's members of the Utah legislature who are listening to this meeting tonight, and if not, maybe we'll send them a copy. But this is the kind of development that we're, you know, the governor says he wants small lots to make affordable houses. Well, guess what? They're there. We've got townhomes, we've got twin homes, we've got small lots, and then we've got some bigger lots. And maybe the people who build on the small lots decide that, hey, I like the, you know, and the timing has to be right, but they're living in the neighborhood and they can just move down the street into a bigger house. I, I think that is to me, this is an experiment that I, that I'm excited to see this. We wrote the, we wrote that integrated housing ordinance a couple of three years ago and passed that for this kind of development to have good housing in the city. And I'm, I'm excited to see this. Because I think there's been some allusion to a couple other developments that you didn't like. And, and they did not, I don't think they're gonna, they're gonna turn out as good as, and hopefully this one, this one does. I love the fact that we're actually building the single family houses in phase one first. Thank you. Most of the time it's how much can, how much density can we put in? And then we'll build, we'll build the single family houses later as an afterthought. I love the fact that the single family houses are built. I also love the fact that you're going to, and it'll probably be still part of the motion, but that we're building the traffic, traffic safety measures into the neighborhood so that we don't have problems like what we heard earlier tonight in citizen comments. You know, if, if we can, particularly that long road that's going to run from Daniel 70th to 74th. If it's got some traffic calming measures and it looks like there's some bulb outs in the design and those kind of things, we have that probably, it's probably a selling point for the developer to say, hey, look, your kids can play on the street and not get hit. But it's also, we don't have to deal with the complaints on a long street that has all of those houses in 10 or 15 years, or five years or two years, whenever that case may be. So thank you for your consideration there. And so, yeah, I, I think this is, uh, like I said, I hopefully, hopefully the legislature pays attention to the fact that you know what, West Jordan City is stepping up and doing their part. But we're doing it the right way. We're not just packing in houses and, and those kind of things. We're doing it the right way. And I think that this is the right way. At, at least we're on the right track. I went through the MD, to, to, to Mr. McConaughey's point, I went through the MDA pretty close. And we found, we found an issue and we've got that corrected now. And so I, 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 I'm happy with it. I'm happy with the way the MDA is written and I'm happy the way the concept plan works. And so I, I, I'm glad that we're to this point on this development. It's been a while coming, but thank you for your patience and working with the staff. Cause I think we've, we've come a long way from when the the original development. And I think this is going to be a lot better than what we first saw three years ago. So thank you.
Council member Bedore.
I would like to see how much I, I liked going through all this. I would like to point out and Chris isn't here any longer, but I would hope that there's more than one or two that, of us on the council that are going through all this. I am very new, but I go through everything and try to pick out and learn what I can with this. And there was a lot I really enjoyed here. Questions I had were, you know, answered. I knew that, you know, many people would ask the same questions I had here. One of the things though, I wanted to see if we can, and I don't know exactly how we address this in a way, but, you know, we look at what we call moderate housing and we put moderate housing and it's going to be that. But I just want to make sure we're building a moderate house. Not just saying this is where the smaller house is going to go. So that is moderate housing. To give you an example, I've got a house I'm about to sell. And so I had a Realtor go through and they said, well, if you take out these countertops and put in these countertops, you'll be able to get another 50,000 out of the home. And if you do this, you're going to be able to get, you know, put in the wood floors, you can easily get another 30,000 just out of that. And I told the Realtor, I said, well, then that, that doesn't help the person I'm trying to sell this house to. I don't want to, first, I don't want to spend the money. I don't want to do the work. And then I don't want to stick it to somebody else just because I gave them an upgraded countertop and I gave them things that maybe they didn't need in a moderate house. So I'm hoping as developers and those that hear this, when you're making a house, a moderate house for someone, a first time person to give, make sure it's a house they can afford. And not just one you made, well, it's a smaller house, so we did our job. It's not about making a smaller house. It's about making an affordable house. And that's what we want to see in West Jordan, not just smaller houses that still have more than a house needs. Make it an affordable house, but all the glitz and the bigger houses. I love what you've done with the outside of the home. I would be happy to live in that if it was empty inside. So you don't have to give me all the bells and whistles inside if I'm looking to have my first house. And I will say that one time when I was looking for my first home, I went to a subdivision that was really, you know, they mixed up a lot of stuff. And the house I really liked was right in the middle of these two huge houses. And I wouldn't buy the house because I was like, this is just going to make me feel weird every time I pull in between these two big houses. And so I went, I went elsewhere. So I don't know of mixing them up. So much is the, is necessary. But anyway, my big point, make affordable houses, not just small houses.
Council member Bloom?
Yes, and along those lines, you have, and we have the privilege of creating these developments for generations to come where people are going to grow up in this house. People are going to have core memories in this house and people are going to look back and drive by this neighborhood someday and say, that's the house I grew up in. And I think and feel that sometimes developers forget that. And when I look at plans and I look in these packets, I, I try to always have that mindset in there. Like, is this a development that? Like, is this a development that we, as a city, are gonna be proud to have in our city? Is this, is this where we're gonna be proud to have our grandchildren look back someday? And having that in mind and looking at the changes that were made and listening to feedback and working with, with our city, thank you for, for, for what you guys are doing, because it is such an amazing work and a privilege to be able to build memories for generations to come. And that's the mindset I have when I look at these plans. And I appreciate what you're doing with not just the moderate housing, but making it affordable so families can move into the same neighborhood, or kids can come in and live by their parents, et cetera. So, yes, we're making memories and we're making lifelong core memories. And, and, and that will never leave my mind when I look at stuff like this. So, thank you.
All right, well, with that being said, I will look for a motion from somebody.
So.
Councilmember Green.
I'm going to, to do the first one at least, I'm going to move to approve ordinance number 24-23 requesting, move to approve ordinance 24-23 approving the master development agreement plan for the 111 development located at 7141 South U11. Including the five thing, four things, the four things that were included in the packet that include, I think Mr. Andreasi mentioned, and the park strips, park strips must not contain sod or turf. All landscaping complies with the West Jordan Ordinance, Water Efficiency Standards, Page 26, park strips shall not consist of surf or todd sod, and that traffic safety measures depicted in the MDP and other traffic safety measures will be incorporated in the street design. Oh, and add one on page four. So, that I think was mentioned. So, that's the motion.
Councilmember Shelton.
I second the motion.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by Councilmember Shelton. Discussion to the motion? My only discussion will be, Mr. Anderson and Warren, do you have what you need to make this motion comply with what we need?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and just from a legal perspective, I, my advice is it does comply with Utah Code Section 10-3-506, which everything is substantially in writing, so.
So, everything mentioned in here, even though it's part of the motion, is in there?
That will be included, and those changes will be made if the motion is approved.
Thank you. Any other questions before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Thank you. I show that motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We will now move to our third public hearing of the night. Ordinance number 24-31, a petition. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I forgot. I wanted to move on, but we gotta do 2424, so.
I'm gonna move to approve ordinance number 24-24.
And I'll second that. As soon as I'm in such a hurry to get to the next one. All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by Council Vice Chair Lamb. Discussion to the motion? Whoa. Seeing none, let's vote.
Sorry, we're not sure what happened there. Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Thank you. I show that motion passes six to zero.
All right. We're good on everything there, so let's move to our third one now. All right, our third public hearing tonight is ordinance number 24-31, a petition requesting approval of a third amendment to a master development agreement for Jordan Valley Station TOD for the purpose of extending the expiration date. So, as far as this goes on, I have Taylor Jensen presenting. So, if Taylor wants to come forward, or is there anybody else? Taylor, you got it? All right.
I'll be brief on this because our portion of it on the planning side is fairly small, but if we can go to the next slide. Oh. I have a clicker. So, this is a petition by Jeff Vitak Bengeter Station LLC, requesting approval of a third amendment to the Jordan Valley TOD for the purpose of extending the expiration date. This is located at approximately 3,400 West and 8,600 South. And the Planning Commission did have a positive recommendation of this change. So, at a glance, just the agreement was originally approved in September of 2010, was amended in March of 2013, first time. A second amendment came in September of 2014. That had a 15-year life, so the current expiration date is September 24, 2029. If this amendment is approved, it would extend the expiration out 15 years from now, which would include 10 total years more. The proposed amendment that is included in your packet replaces Section 6.11 of the Development Agreement. So, here on the side, we can just see the original agreement at the top, the second amendment in the middle, which is what's currently in place, and the proposed third amendment. So, that's all I have. I know that the applicant is here, that if you have any questions for them, they also have some more information about the development that they wanted to share, but I'm happy to ask any questions you have about this portion of it.
Does the Council have any questions before we go to public comment? Councilmember Whitelock.
Chair, I don't have any questions, but I'm going to ask that we refer this to a committee of the whole, because after reviewing it, I feel like this council needs more information, so.
You need to have the public hearing first.
Right, right. I'm just, so therefore, I don't have any questions for this meeting. That's all I'm telling you.
Perfect. Okay. Seeing that, I will move to our public comments for this public hearing. I will open public comments. For anybody that is in the room right now, if you'd like to speak to this, please come forward, and you have three minutes to speak. Seeing nobody in the room, Mr., oh, did you want to do a public comment or talk after? Okay, we can have you come up after public comment. Mr. Anderson, is there anybody online?
Yes, there are four individuals online, none of which have raised their hand.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will close the public hearing, and we will revert back to the City Council. Do we want to have the applicant come forward and talk for a minute? Are you guys okay with that? Did you want to come share some information with us and?
Set a time.
All right. I'm gonna set a timer for three minutes, and if we need longer, we'll talk about that. So, go ahead.
Great. Thank you, Council. My name is Alec Taylor. I am with Boulder Ventures Development. And I am representing tonight Jordan Valley Station. As you may know, Jordan Valley Station is a development in West Jordan that's being built in partnership by our companies, as well as the Utah Transit Authority.
So, how does Boulder Ventures?
As stated by the staff, our, our request tonight is for the Council to approve the extension of the development agreement. Really, this is intended to allow us as the developer to continue to do what we've, what we have done in West Jordan for the past 30 years, since we started with Jordan Landing Shopping Center, which is really to provide Class A top construction and development into West Jordan in phase development, so that way we can build to market demands and market trends and make sure we build something we're proud of for a community. I did prepare just a brief presentation on the community itself, just for the Council's benefit. Jordan Valley Station is a 40-acre site, originally entitled in 2010. It has a residential, commercial, retail, restaurant components involved. And this is a transit-oriented development, which means it is a higher density classification, and all of the public infrastructure and private investments are built around the UTA Jordan Valley Track Station itself. Today, you can see here on the slide, this just shows the progress that we have made in the last 14 years. Halfway through the land, we've built several private investments, as well as invested heavily and made significant progress in public infrastructure. And that public infrastructure includes the roads and utilities for the site itself, the UTA Track Station, the parking garage related to that station, which, which are public, as well as extending and improving the trail along the Bingham Creek, Bingham Creek. The private investments we have in the project have all been built in phases, which, which means that for each section, Novi, Upper West, or the brand-new Momento Apartments, we build them in chunks at a time. So, that way, we, when we build them out, we can plan, design them for a couple of years, and really give out a product that we're proud of. Each of these phases takes about four to five years to complete. And so, our request for the Council to extend the development agreement really gives us as developer the runway needed to continue building out each of the subsequent phases in a way we're proud of.
All right, so there's your three minutes. I think from this phase right now is, there has been some discussion even before this meeting of maybe moving this to a committee of the whole, which should give us more time to discuss it and talk about it more. So, at this time, I just want to open this up to Councilmembers right now. If they have any questions for now, and then we can discuss whether or not we're going to move forward or go to a committee of the whole. So, Councilmember Green.
I don't have any questions. I just have to comment, so.
Did you want to make a comment now?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm in favor of postponing this and moving it to committee of the whole, and let me tell you why. And I'm gonna go through several things. One, this is a transit-oriented development that was started in 2010. We've gone through almost the, the entire length of that development, and we're not finished yet. But I see stations like Fairborn Station, Farmington Station, all these other stations completed, and ours isn't done. So, that's the first issue. The second issue that I want to see is in paragraph 1.5, it talks about conditions precedent. I want to see if the operating agreement that's between Bangater Station Associates, and I don't know how Boulder Ventures is involved, because this is Bangater Associates that we're extending the development for. And so, I'm curious to hear how that's gonna work. But Bangater Station had an operating agreement with UTA, and I want to know if that operating agreement is still valid. Because otherwise, the condition precedent in the, in the original master development agreement goes away, and the extension's not any good. The, the next one that I had, the next one that I am super concerned about is that this development talks about an access road, which I believe is Jordan Line Parkway Road. And it's really interesting, in the master development agreement that we're asked to extend, it specifically calls out a intersection at Jordan Line Parkway. It's called it the access road, but it specifically calls out an intersection to be put in when our city traffic engineer warrants, the warrants that the engineer, that the engineering study is there. We have not seen an engineering study, but I want to know where that traffic light is. And if the developer says, well, we don't want to put it in, then they're in breach of the contract, and we don't need to extend it. The other part is that it specifically calls out a westbound right turn lane onto Han Drive. And that one's supposed to be done in the third phase. I don't know what phase we're in, but it specifically calls out a right turn lane for Han Drive. In 14 years, we don't have a dedicated right pocket for Han Drive. And so, I'm questioning, I'm questioning that particular issue. The, the other, the other issue that I have is that in this development agreement, the, the master development agreement said we were reducing the impact fees based on the demonstrated reduced demand in the project on city systems. And there was some, some stuff on Appendix A about impact fees, because there was a traffic engineering study done in 2010 that, uh-oh, we have an echo.
You broke the microphone.
In 2010 that said that traffic was gonna be reduced by 21%. Well, I've driven through that area, and traffic hasn't been reduced by 21%. And so, I, I want to see if we need to update that. There's a section in this MDA that talks about the reduced impact fees, and if they're increased and whatever, and it's tied to a date in, in 2015. That was 10 years ago when we've increased the impact fees. I want to know what the impact fees are going to be in this development when we come back, because what we hear from our residents is we're not supposed to be subsidizing developers' pockets by reducing impact fees. And I'm not sure that I want to reduce impact fees, particularly for police and fire and those kind of things. And so, that's, that's another one of the issues. The other interesting thing about this particular development, besides the impact fees, and I'll refer this back to the Council with two, with, with, with a couple of things, and then one final question. This development agreement also says that before the roundabout and the median that's put in on Jordan Line Parkway is done, there will be a written agreement where the developer creates a mechanism to pay the city the money for maintaining the roundabout and the islands. I've not seen anything in the four and a half, in the five budgets that I've worked on, on this, on this City Council, where the developers provided us any money to maintain Jordan Line Parkway Road. Now, and I haven't seen anything where that money was deducted out of the next thing that I'm gonna talk about. The developer has been given a substantial amount of money in tax increment financing on this through the redevelopment agency. The contract, the, the RDA says that they can't get any more money than the tax increment. Well, the tax increment agreement with the RDA, I'm willing to bet, I haven't seen it for 15 years. Now, we want to extend it from, I want you to think about this. We are, they're trying to extend the development agreement from where it would have ended in 2025, the original development agreement of next year to 2039, another 15 years from today. Now, my question is, is if they're only supposed to get tax increment, have we overpaid the tax increment because the tax increment's not happening, and it's being extended out until 2039? The developer, I'm gonna say this, and I hope I'm proven wrong. The developer back in 2010, when they got the, the, the TIF agreement with the RDA and the city, I wonder if they sold us a bill of goods to say, hey, you give us all of this tax incentive, and we're gonna build this great development, and we haven't seen that development come to fruition, and it's not gonna be. And, and I do recall that in that development, there was a commercial, but the commercial was the very last phase of this project. So, are we saying, oh, we're gonna extend this out till 2039, and we're not gonna see any commercial development in this project until 2039? That's what I heard tonight, is that, and, and you know what? I, I just can't buy that. The idea was to build this and to get it done, and if we cannot abide by even some of the, the original terms that I see or examine them again, I'm wondering if the developer is in breach of this contract, and we need to terminate it, and we need to rework it. Because that's where I'm at with that. The last thing that I'm going to ask, the last question that I'm going to ask with this, and that's why I'm supporting to examine this in depth, is what's in it for the city? It sounds like everything is what's in this for the developer. And what I hear is, well, whatever the case may be, we don't have the money, we don't have the capital, we don't have whatever. We haven't been able to complete this execution in the last 15 years. You got to give us another 15 years to execute that. That's great. But if the tax increment's in that 15 years, then maybe you don't get any more tax increment financing, there's nothing, and we need to renegotiate the impact fees. Because this is just, in my mind, and I wasn't part of the council, I wasn't part of the planning commission in 2010, but this was a sweetheart deal. Tax increment financing to somehow create this great development to the tune of $20 million, or almost $20 million if I remember the number right. Am I close, Denise? $20 million and reduced impact fees. And we haven't got anything that was even in the master development agreement built yet. Intersections, right turn pockets, agreements to reimburse the city for maintenance of roads. If those haven't been done, contract's in breach, as far as I'm concerned, and maybe we need to start over. And so again, my question is, what's in this for the city? Because all this does is look like, well, what's in it for the developer? We continue to get all of our tax increment financing money, and we're not performing anything in the city. When was the last time the developer put anything in in Jordan Valley? It's been a couple of years. Nothing's been put in. We're not seeing the supposed increase in tax money that we should have seen and that all the other wonderful things about a TOD. And it's sitting there half undeveloped. And until we can get to the bottom of the TIF with the RDA, with some of these other things that were supposed to be invested and the contract followed through, I'm not going to support this. And so if we vote on this tonight, I'll be a no, but I am willing to postpone it to get the answers. But you can see where my concern is. Thank you.
Okay, so I see you do have a lot of questions. If you could put that list of questions together, because these are the first times I've heard from you, just so the whole council could have it, and so Alan can have it for all of us to look at. Right, I think that'd be the best thing, and I don't think we have any questions for you tonight, so you can sit down if you'd like. Looks like we're going to try and postpone it to have some more in-depth discussion. Doesn't mean we don't want to do it, we just want to have, you know, the opportunity.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Councilman Green, if you type all those questions and send to our team as well, we're happy.
He'll send them to Alan, and you could get them from Alan.
Because we'll be happy to walk it through and talk through all those points.
Okay. So do you want to make the motion? Or Councilmember Shelton, do you have any?
You need to open the public hearing, right?
We already had it.
Yeah, we already had.
So would it be appropriate for you to make a motion now?
Yes.
So I'd like to move that we bring this item before the committee of the whole.
Do we, real quick, do we need a specific date, Councilman, or Dr. Anderson?
You keep saying that.
Well, once a council member, always a council member. Even Mayor Burton's Councilmember Burton.
So repeat the question, because I'm actually listening to it.
The question is, do we need to set a specific committee of the whole date, or can we do that later?
No, you don't need to submit a committee of the whole date. The question that you would have is if you're going to refer it to the committee of the whole, then leadership can plan the date right now, where you're probably October, November timeframe before you'll have time. We've got some pressing issues in August and September. Unless leadership wants to adjust that, or the majority of the council wants to set a specific date, is what I would recommend, or is what's available.
So do you want to set a specific date?
So just refer it to a committee of the whole meeting at the future date to be determined.
Okay. So state your motion one more time.
So I'd like to move that we refer this ordinance number 24-31 to a future committee of the whole meeting on a date to be determined.
Okay.
I will second that.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Shelton and a motion by Councilmember Bloom. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Green?
We can do that by voice vote.
Oh, can we do it by voice vote?
Yes, because we're not voting on it.
So no roll call on this?
It's just a procedural vote.
Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero with the aye. Okay. So just for the applicant, we'll get back to you on when we set that up. It could be as soon as August, it could be October, but we'll get with you. Anyway, I won't say anything else. I was going to say something else, but I held it in. Okay. All right, our last public hearing for the evening is ordinance number 24-30, a petition requesting a rezon over approximately 2.54 acres at 1390 West and 90th South. And I have Tanner Hanson or Taylor Jensen who will be presenting.
Do you want the applicant or staff?
Well, let's have staff go first, and then you can present the applicant. You want the applicant to go first?
Yeah, it should be.
We've just been both ways tonight, so I wasn't sure.
I don't care. If you guys prefer the applicant, I'm good.
Let's let the applicant go first.
We're going to have the applicant go first. All right. Lucky you.
Thanks for having me. I'm Tanner with Victory Builders. And yeah, we're here searching for a rezon for a project on 1390 South or West and 90th South. Reason for the rezon is that our project covers 40% of the land, and current zoning in SC1 and SC2 allow up to 30%. That is the purpose of the rezon. Do you have any questions on the packet that's been presented? We do, the buildings themselves are, we call them small business incubators. And we've had a great time working with the city so far with Larry and Paul and Planning Development. Taylor's been great. We feel like we have the same vision for that property as the city. And our buildings are meant to help small businesses. The reason why we came here and liked the lot over there is because West Jordan has an abundance of small businesses since COVID have been working out of their house. And they need someplace to go. Our units within the building are 1,500 square foot units. And it should be great for the city, for local citizens here that want to get into small business, but don't want to spend the high price of a large building or commit to a long lease with a large building as well. So that's why we call them small business incubators, because they help small businesses get on their feet and grow and stay in West Jordan, because there are a lot of people searching for this. This is, our buildings are some of the most highest demand, in the most high demand buildings in the state. That small business building is really popular right now. And the business it'll bring for the city is what we're searching for. So yeah, that's why we're searching for the rezon. The building layout doesn't change, just the property coverage.
Any questions before the public hearing? Okay. Do you want to have Taylor come up real quick? Do you have anything else to present?
Yeah, I can do just a quick primer.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair and Council. So just an overview on this, it is rezoning two and a half, 2.54 acres from two different zones. There's three parcels with two zones currently, SC1 and SC2, to the general commercial zone, the CG zone. We did present this to the planning commission, had a public hearing about a month ago, and it was recommended for approval with a vote of four to one. We did have two commissioners absent at that meeting, and the negative vote did not say why they voted no.
That was going to be my question. That was going to be my question, was what was the negative from the planning commission?
I have my assumptions, but I don't want to speak for somebody else, so. The site, as we can see it here, is located behind the H Mart, next to the Stonegate Townhomes, and there's an LDS chapel there as well. From a staff's perspective, this is one of the better uses we've seen for this. Other uses I've seen have been a soccer field and a blow up hockey arena. So something that is going to make economic development work in this area, I think, is positive. As I mentioned, there was two different zones and three parcels. You can see how that works out. Kind of the flagpole is the SC1, and the flag itself is the SC2. And they're just going to the CG, which actually matches, which is across 1,300 West as well. The future land use map supports this change. And well, there is no guarantee they would build this because it's just a concept plan at this time. This is the concept plan they have turned in for those, we call them flex office, they call them incubators. This would meet the standards of the CG zone as we've looked at it so far, but we would do a more thorough review before we brought this to the city council or planning commission. Here's an example of what they anticipate those buildings would look like. And then, should this rezon be approved tonight? Next steps would be a site plan in the major subdivision, both of which would have to go to a public hearing at planning commission. And then they would have to go through a final site plan and subdivision at staff level. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Taylor, I just, we received emails about this project and another one from someone from the FAA.
Yeah, that was really odd to us because it's like a liveaway suite, which is opening up, is next to the airport. And FAA had nothing to say about it, but this one, they said if you have a 200 foot crane, you need to get an approval from us. I've mentioned that to the applicant. These buildings are looking at like 25 to 30 feet tall, so we don't anticipate that being a problem at all.
Yeah, I just thought that was interesting.
Yeah.
I don't know. Do we know when they anticipate starting? When do they want to start building these? Do you know?
ASAP.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will turn the time over to our public comments. If you would like to make a public comment for this public hearing, please come forward right now, and you have three minutes to speak. Not all at once. Mr. Anderson, is anybody online that would like to speak?
There are four individuals online, none of which have raised their hand.
Okay, with that, I will close the public comments. And I will make a quick comment for myself before I go to Councilmember Green. I've lived in this area for 24 plus years now. I have driven that road, the back, we used to call it the back road to Kmart hundreds of times, until Kmart decided to not exist anymore, and they closed it off, and it couldn't go to Home Depot that way. So thank goodness H Mart's here. We're still waiting for an F Mart too, I guess. But this concept is a great concept. I've seen a few concepts come here, I've met with Councilmember Green a few times on some concepts, and nothing ever seemed right. So thank you for bringing something that works on that little parcel. Wow, I mean, that's not easy. I will say my only worry, but it's not my worry because I'm not going to be the one getting those stores. I do worry that with that many shops and that many parcels, how many will be empty? But hopefully you have a good team that knows how to sell those, and there's businesses that will want to open in there. And with that, I will go to Councilmember Green.
So like Councilmember Lamb, I do drive that street a lot. And I'm glad that somebody's finally going to get rid of the parking lot and the salt pile that's there that are ugly. So thank you. This is a good design. I like the idea of where you're going. The last serious design that I think we saw was about three years ago, when we were on the land use committee, and somebody wanted to put a 15? I want to say it was like a 15 story apartment complex on the bigger piece, on the bigger lot. It was like, we looked at that and laughed and said, you.
So did the FAA.
Yeah, so did the FAA. So did the FAA. But it was like unbelievable. And so, no, I think this is a perfect type of business that will, hopefully it will support some new businesses, small businesses. I've seen this kind of space up on Pioneer Road in Draper. And those spaces seem to do well with very, it's crazy what kind of business, you know? One will be a dance studio, and one will be a spa, and another one, it's great the way they work. And so I'm, if you're willing to start, and I'm looking forward to seeing the tractors out there getting rid of the salt pile. So thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, I'm assuming you would, but you know, we had those parceled out in different things. Like, they are things where someone could buy a couple and put them together to form a bigger space, and they would be built out for that kind of thing, right? I mean, just, I just wanted to make sure. I mean, I didn't see that in the reading of it, but I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Yes.
That was.
They could buy 10 if they wanted, or rent 10, I guess.
Typically, not that many, but if they want to do a couple at a time, because of the load bearing walls, you can definitely do that.
Right, that's what I wanted to make sure, how that was being put together. All right, yeah, I wasn't expecting 10, but maybe two or three.
You've got a good business, you can use 10.
I was going to go nine.
All right. Well, if there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion. I will move to approve ordinance number 24-30, requesting a rezon over approximately 2.54 acres at 1390 West and 90th South. Councilmember Shelton?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Vice Chair Lamb and a second by Councilmember Shelton. Discussion to the motion. See none, let's vote.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Thank you. I show that passes six to zero.
All right, that is the end of our public hearings. I will ask, do you want to move forward, or does anybody need a break? Let's move forward. Okay, we will move to business item 6A, Resolution 24-031, authorizing issuance and sale of not more than $12? $12 million aggregate principal amount of sales tax revenue bonds. Denise Steck.
Made me double check my request for council action. All right.
A bond for $12 would be pretty cool.
Council, first, I would like to welcome our financial advisor, Laura Lewis. She's with LRB Public Finance Advisors. They have been renamed. They used to be named Lewis Young. Oh, man, now I already forgot it. There we go, we've moved on to that. We're LRB. And so they have assisted us in preparing this resolution for you. We also have acquired bond counsel from Gilmar Bell. Randy Larson will be our bond counsel for this project. So next slide. We're going to go over the parameters resolution. I'm sure that you've all read it, but just to go over what the purposes are. So next slide. The funds are going to be used to construct the recreational fields, or soccer fields, or multipurpose fields that will be replacing and adding to our current inventory of fields. We will also be doing some park improvements as needed, if funds allow. The fields are the first project, but if there are funds in excess of what we would need for those developments, then we would do some other park improvements as well. Would also include all of the related improvements, so any kind of utilities that would need to be brought in or that kind of thing. The order of the funds to be used will be used to construct recreational fields at Ronwood Park, fields at other locations, park projects at Ronwood Park, and then park projects at other locations as well. To be impact fee eligible, these projects have to be new construction, so it can't be something that we break down and rebuild, unless we rebuild it at a higher level of service, and then provide the level of service that the city's identified in the park's master plan for new development. We intend for all of these bond payments to come out of park impact fees. However, we recognize that there may be a possibility where a portion of the project might not be eligible for an impact fee reimbursement, and we would need to recover that from general CIP funds. But we're going to try to keep that at a bare minimum. Next slide. All right, so here's the parameters, or parameters or boundaries that the council. All right, so here's the parameters, or parameters or boundaries that the council will be setting. So this process is, the council's gonna set the boundaries for us to issue the bond. And then, as long as we're playing in those boundaries or parameters, when we do issue the bond, then we, as a pricing committee, which we'll go over in a moment, will be able to say, yes, go. So it gives us a time period to issue the bonds instead of a set date, because as you know, the economy changes every day. So it would allow us a time period to issue the bonds instead of, on September 15th, we will issue bonds, which would really set us into a strict standard. It defines the pricing committee, authorizes the mayor to execute the sale of the bonds based on the advice of the pricing committee during a specified period of time. It allows the city to reimburse project-related expenses for a look-back period. So we have already completed design on many of this, these projects, and so we could reimburse from the bond proceeds for the design expenses. And then it will set a public hearing date of August 27th to receive public comment on the bond proposal. Next slide. All right, the project is defined as park and recreational field projects and all related improvements, which you've already gone over. The parameters will be, the issue amount will be no more than $12 million. So you're gonna see a couple of numbers throughout the indentures and on the calendars and that kind of thing. That is because we anticipate these bonds to be issued at a premium, which means that they will be bought in excess of what the bond coupon amount is for. So people would be excited to buy the bonds, we're hopeful. There have been periods of time in the past where you would have to sell your bonds at a discount, but we're gonna set a parameter on that as well. We would not allow the interest rate, overall interest rate or APR, to exceed 5.5%. They would be, not be sold, this is the discount part, at less than 70, 90, 97%, 79 would be bad. 97% of the total principal amount, so we would take a discount of up to 3% if the economy were to change. I haven't seen a discount added issuance in a very long time, have you? No. Yeah. The term will not exceed 21 years overall, and that's allowing that first year to kind of pass by before you have your first payment. Pledged revenues are sales and use taxes. So while we intend to pay this back with park impact fees, that is not a guaranteed revenue source for a bond issuance, and so we're gonna guarantee it with sales tax, pay it with park impact fees. Okay? The pricing committee is authorized to make the final go decision. It's almost like sitting in the seat at NASA at the takeoff. You're the one that says, yes, we're good to go today, on this day. Pricing committee is authorized to make those final decisions about the timing and the terms as long as they're within the parameters that we are providing to you tonight. Next slide. Okay, so the pricing committee is to be comprised of three of the following six people, with at least one of them being, one of the three being the council chair, the council vice chair. The list is comprised of two positions per committee member to ensure that an alternate's available if needed. If I were to get sick and not be available, then the city treasurer could step in in my place. If the mayor or Corbin were to be sick, they could interact with each other. So the mayor, the CAO, myself, the Chief Administrative Services Director, not chief, I don't know what I'm saying, reading two lines at once. The Administrative Services Director, the city treasurer, Tyler Aiken, the council chair, and the council vice chair. Next slide.
I have a question.
Of course, yes.
We are two equal and separate branches of government, and I take issue with that the executive branch has more than legislative branch. Would you be amenable to adding one of our staff members, either Mr. Hallmark or Mr. Anderson, so that we're, we are equal?
That, this is your resolution, and I would be amenable to whatever you've decided as a body.
Okay.
What is it? Sorry.
You would just need to state that change when you adopt the resolution, okay?
Sorry. Okay. The 30-day contest period, so there is a 30-day period that begins after this resolution is adopted, so that starts the clock. And the bonds can't be sold during that time period. The city needs to hold a public hearing during that time period at some point, so we have slated it for your August 27th meeting to receive public comment on the bond issuance. The public hearing will have a 14-day notice, and your council office will take care of that. And we are saying that it will expire on September 4th. While that's a little in excess of the 30-day period, we recognize that the Labor Day holiday's in there, and we want to be respectful of the public. Historically, market inventory has increased around presidential elections. Everybody kind of wants what they know and not what they don't know when change occurs. And LRB has recommended issuance in September as long as market conditions are favorable. Does not mean we can't issue after September, but we believe that it would be the most favorable market time to get, to get in there. So that's what we're really aiming towards with this resolution and the calendar. Next slide. All right, so the fiscal note, again, the issuance is $12 million, with the interest rate at 5.5%, the total estimated cost after 20 years is $17.4 million. Annual debt service payment's $885,000 a year. Right now, the city has very little debt. It has a general obligation bond, which will be paid off April 1st of this year, so we're collecting for it the last time with this tax year. We have $5.1 million in water revenue bonds, that's paid by water, your water fees. 1.4 million in stormwater revenue bonds, and then $20 million left over to pay for the public works building. But it isn't issued under the city's name, it is issued under the municipal building authority. Is that my whole slide? Yep, that's it.
So I'm just gonna ask a question. Because of that, that means our income-to-debt ratio is okay, and our credit report looks good?
And that's what we're, so we're pretty excited to do. I know that sounds silly, but right now, we're getting ready for our ratings presentation. We're gonna go between, before two rating agencies, the two that rate best for sales tax revenue bonds. The other rating agency tends not to, to like rating sales tax revenue bonds. And we are currently rated at a double A minus. We anticipate a rating upgrade and are hoping to receive a double A plus or better. So we're doing our very best to do that with the presentation about where, where we have gone in our city over the last, you know, and been rated in almost a decade, so it's been a really long time. Any other questions that I can answer for you? And again, Laura Lewis is here for you to answer any questions as well about the process. I included the bond calendar that they've prepared. We will be going before those rating agencies about the third week of August to present. Okay, we'll leave it in your capable hands, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. She didn't catch that. Chief Denise. All right. Well, let's turn it back to the council and have any discussions or any questions before we look at a motion. So Councilmember Whitelock.
So as I asked Denise, I feel strongly about this. I feel like we are equal branches, and we should be equally represented on this. And, and so if you're all amenable to that, great. If not, my vote will be no. And I guess the real question is, is it our policy analyst title, or is it our council office director, who tonight apparently is a council member? So, so really, I'm just looking for what fellow council members feel. We're really just looking at finishing Ronwood Park. It seems like a good idea, and if we can mostly pay with that for park impact fees, I think it is a good idea to get the green space now.
So I, I agree with you on the equal. I am wondering, though, to be the equal that we're talking about, do we want a second council member and not a council staff?
You mean the third council member?
No, so the way it works is they have to call three people, two of them being the staff, and one of them being, it would be the, the chair first. So what we're asking to do is add a fourth person. So the chair and the vice chair list, because if Zach doesn't answer, then they go to me for the third vote. So what I'm saying is, should we put a third council member on there? And that way, that they call two council members, and then if I don't answer, then they call one of you.
I'm happy either way, I'm okay if it's our staff. And, and I think, I think that they wanted to stay with titles, is my understanding. And I don't know how we'd stay.
They asked us about names, and then the recommendation came from Denise to just stick with the vice, the chair and the vice chair, which, you know, if it's me or it's not me, I don't really care. But in this case, we're, we're gonna add a second person. I think we would need to add a third person in that list, is that correct, Denise?
Yes, we could probably, we could add the title, a member of the budget audit committee, or a member of whatever, we just want a title of some sort, so names aren't involved.
So a member of the budget audit committee would be me, which I'm already on there, so it'd be either Councilmember Green or Councilmember Shelton as the, how many names are there? Five? So the sixth name would be one, one or the other. So in that case, would we need to designate a person or just the title?
Just the title would be fine, and then I would just go through a calling list at, at the morning of the sale. So if we don't sell one morning, so the pricing calls are typically early in the morning, we'll review the market conditions, then we'll review if they're within the parameters, and if we feel good about the market conditions and what's been performing. And then we all make a go or no-go kind of call. If we say no-go, and we decide, you know, the next day or the next two days later, then you need to just be available for the next pricing call.
Okay, so in this sense, what would happen is, we're asking for two council members. So after you, if you called Zach and then I didn't answer, then you would go to either Councilmember Green or Councilmember Shelton.
Correct.
Okay. Looks like you have some comments.
And so where the designated officers are listed is in the last whereas clause before all the section 1, 2, 3, 4. And it reads at least three of the following six, and Denise went through that. Then it goes on to say, provided however that at least one of the such designated officers shall be from the chair or vice chair. So you would probably want to change that word as well. So at least two of them would be either the chair or the vice chair, so you have the representation that you're expecting from the council.
So two of them, with them being the chair, vice chair, and/or a member of the budget audit committee.
Okay.
Yes.
Does anyone want to take a stab at a motion?
Could we make that?
I was gonna say, you might want to write that down.
Chief council member, the third person, make so we have a title there.
What was that?
Chief council member. Make that the third one.
Hey, we need a chief too, right? So.
Would adding the member of the budget audit committee work? I'd rather not burden the staff with this, and we're the elected people, so we should take the heat for that.
Can you talk into your mic?
Or, I'm just saying, otherwise we, I don't want to burden the staff with it. I think that us as the elected should take the hit for that if we screw it up.
I agree with that.
Okay. Councilmember Shelton.
I'm a little confused.
Yes, Chief Councilmember.
So as titles go, why not just use the title, a member of the city council?
You absolutely could do that, two members of the city council, and I will randomly choose. Just don't get mad at me for.
I, I feel like that would simplify and open doors in time-sensitive situations. I would be.
It could be done that way as well.
Yeah, I think either way, we're just looking for a second council member to have a vote. So, yeah.
I would be in favor of, of just having a member of the city council, that qualifies as a title.
It does, yes.
It sounds like we're all easygoing into whatever it is, and I, I tend to lean with Councilmember Shelton. We can do a member of city council, because then that opens it up for whoever's available.
Yeah, well, we know who the first two calls are gonna be, and then it's just, and then just after that, it works. So we're good.
I'll purposely not answer, so one of you can do it. All right. I'll make a complicated motion here. All right. I move that we approve Resolution number 24-031, authorizing issuance and sale of not more than $12 million aggregate principal amount of sales tax revenue bonds, adding a third member of the city council. Will that work? You shake your head no?
We're gonna change it to be that at least two of the designated officers, let's see, we're gonna have to change a lot more, let's, we're gonna change it, of at least four of the following members.
It's more complicated than it looks.
Right, four of the following members, the mayor, the CAO, the administrative services director, and members of the city council and the city treasurer, provided however that at least two of the such designated officers be from a member of the council.
Well, we need to say is two from the executive branch and two from the legislative branch. That makes it simple. And you have your four people to choose from, and we have our four or so, seven to choose.
I think that the executive branch needs to be called out by title, because I don't want the parks maintenance supervisor to be approving the bond. Just kidding. No offense to the parks maintenance supervisors.
Alan and Warren, go back to the page that has all the names on it.
It's page three of the resolution.
Okay, so let me try this again. I move that we approve Resolution number 24-031, authorizing issuance and sale of not more than $12 million aggregate principal amount of sales tax revenue bonds comprised of four of the following seven, with at least one, with at least two of the three being the council chair or council vice chair. Does that work? What am I missing there?
Almost there. I should have written this.
Or council member.
Two of the four.
Two of the four being the council chair or council vice chair or council member.
Perfect.
Woo! Put the woo in there, too. Councilmember Bloom?
I second.
All right, you, you think you do. I don't even know what I said, no.
I had it easy.
All right. So we have a motion by Vice Chair Lamb, a second by Councilmember Bloom. Any more discussion to the motion? So now you all have to be ready for a call. All right, is, this is a roll call vote, so Warren.
Councilmember Shelton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom.
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore.
Yes.
Thank you, I show that motion passes six to zero.
Move to approve consent items.
Second.
We have a motion to approve consent items and a second, oh, by Councilmember Green, and a second by Councilmember Whitelock. This is not a roll call vote, correct? All those in favor say aye, aye. Any not opposed, any opposed, say nay. Not opposed, any opposed? All right, and now I'm going to adjourn the city council meeting for tonight. I don't want to make a motion.